Good afternoon, welcome. Good afternoon, thank you for joining us, everybody. Good afternoon, we're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. Buenas tardes a todos, bienvenidos y gracias por estar con nosotros. Si usted necesita intérprete, interpretación, tenemos intérpretes hoy en varios idiomas. Pueden levantar la mano o decirlo, decirle a uno de nuestros empleados y les podemos ayudar con interpretación en esta tarde. If you need an interpreter, we have interpreters available today in person. So if you would like interpretation for today's meeting, please let one of our staff members know, raise your hand, and we'll make sure that we have an interpreter available for you this afternoon. So we'll call our meeting to order. Good afternoon, welcome, everybody. It's great to see you all. It is Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, 5:01 PM, and this is our regularly scheduled board meeting. Welcome, Dr. Stubblefield, board colleagues, to all of our staff and to all of our guests that are present with us, both in person and virtually welcome. Thank you for joining us today. As we do at every board meeting, I'll read our board norms and protocols. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we're following our norms when conducting district business. Again, welcome, thank you for joining us. We're gonna go ahead and get started with a roll call. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve tonight's regular agenda?
Mr. Lopez, I don't know if this is the proper time, but I'd like to add another executive session to the agenda, please.
You, we will add an executive session. That would be session G, Ms. Smith, on the agenda.
What kind of session?
What kind of session is that? Personnel, non-elected personnel?
There's two items that relate to that. So does it have to be a separate, or can we do both at the same time?
Unless it's the same issue that just...
Well, it's a different issue.
Yeah, then it's gotta be two separate ones.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll add item F and item H, both non-elected personnel. Ms. Page.
No, they're...
They're personnel, yeah, okay. Okay. Is there a motion to approve tonight's amended agenda with those two additional executive sessions?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? In hearing none, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We're gonna jump right into our agenda. We have a full agenda, as you know, in November. We only have one regularly scheduled meeting, so there's lots to go through, but we're gonna start off with a very exciting and great opportunity for our district to celebrate. So I'll pass it off to Dr. Stubblefield.
Thank you, and we just, I'm gonna hand it off to Dr. Nguyen, but I first want to publicly thank Dr. Nguyen and other legislators who worked to bring Ruby Bridges to the state of Kansas and Topeka, and will have about 150 students who will be able to go and meet and hear her. So I appreciate all the hard work that she's done. And with that, I will pass it along to Dr. Nguyen to read the resolution publicly.
And I'd like to thank the district for allowing the students to go. I didn't choose the school, so I'll get that off of my plate. You know, if I'd had my way, we'd have 22,000 up there. But it is an opportunity. So do we make a motion for this resolution first?
Yes, so if there is a motion from the board to adopt the resolution to making November 14th, 2024, Ruby Bridges Day in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
Yolanda Clark.
We'll go ahead and actually read the resolution.
Resolution before the vote.
Okay. Whereas Unified School District Number 500, Wyandotte County, Kansas, is a unified school district and governmental subdivision of the state of Kansas, existing by and under the authority of the statutes of the state of Kansas, and which provides educational services to the children of Wyandotte County, Kansas. And whereas Unified School District Number 500, Wyandotte County, Kansas, recognizes and appreciates the cultural diversity that exists in its district and stresses an appreciation for multicultural education, respect for diversity, and the enhancement of positive human relationships amongst the students, teachers, staff, and the larger community. And whereas the Board of Education recognizes the decision handed down by the United States Supreme Court on May 17th, 1954, in Brown versus Board of Education, Topeka, Kansas, that racially segregated public schools violated the 14th Amendment. And whereas on November 14th, 1960, Ruby Nell Bridges attended an all-white elementary school in New Orleans, Louisiana, as the only African-American student enrolled at that school. And whereas the Kansas Senate and House of Representatives passed Senate Resolution 1756 and House Resolution 6047, respectively commemorating 2024 as the 70th anniversary of the Brown versus Board of Education decision, which made segregation in public schools illegal in the United States. And whereas the Kansas Senate has recognized November 14th, 2024, as Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day in the state of Kansas. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Education of Unified School District Number 500, Wyandotte County, Kansas, that November 14th, 2024, be designated and observed as Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, adopted by the Board of Education of Unified School District Number 500, Wyandotte County, Kansas, this 12th day of November, 2024.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Roll call, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you again, thank you for your leadership, Dr. Nguyen, in bringing this to USD 500 and to the state of Kansas. This is really great, so we appreciate your leadership.
And thank you to the district for providing the way to get the kids there, because this is quite an opportunity.
Thank you.
Because she's only doing it for the kids. It's closed to adults, essentially, because she only agreed to do it for the kids, and that the kids will get a book bag, another book, and that, there was one other thing I wanted to say, but I'll think of it later. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Okay, so we're gonna continue on with celebrations and recognitions today. Just a reminder, in terms of the process, we're gonna recognize our Employees of the Month and then our Students of the Month. Then we will take a quick recess, a quick pause, to celebrate those employees and students and take a picture. The picture will be with the student first and the board, and then we will invite the staff of the school from where that student attends, and then we'll invite the parents or family members who are here of those students to take a picture as well. So again, thank you, and we'll follow that process. So, but first, we'll have our Employees of the Month. Good evening.
Good evening, Board, President Lopez and Dr. Stubblefield. So we are excited to announce our November Employee of the Month, and we will start first with Coach Law. Coach Law is from J.C. Harmon. She goes above and beyond for the students at her school and athletes. Coach Law is starting a mentorship group for the girls at Harmon High School, focusing on mental health and having a safe space within the school. Not only is she a listening ear for the students, but she also is there for her coworkers. She is a liaison for parents of her students and helps them get back on track in other classes. I admire her dedication to the school and her students. She deserves to be celebrated and given her flowers in advance. Our second employee of the month is Mr. Torres. And Mr. Torres is from Alfred Fairfax Academy. Mr. Torres has been the custodian at Alfred Fairfax Academy for my entire four years at this school and long before that. He consistently is the first person in the building, hard at work ensuring our school is clean and well-maintained. When we moved into a new building four years ago, Mr. Torres was instrumental in ensuring that the building was ready for students on a very short turnaround. Recently, Mr. Torres has done an incredible amount of work repairing two of our bathrooms that broke towards the beginning of the school year. The bathrooms now look cleaner and better than ever, and all because of his hard work. Finally, Mr. Torres always has a smile, and his positivity radiates through both students and staff in the building.
Now for the students. Buenos noches, President Lopez and Dr. Stubblefield, the board, and participating staff and audience. I am Dr. Sarah Lucero, and I'm here to present our awesome students. And the first one I have is Ivana San Juan Galaviz. Oh, and she is our early childhood student at Morse, Early Childhood Elementary, and she is nominated for November Student of the Month by her teacher, Ms. Frye. She constantly arrives at school with a big cheerful smile that you can see on her face right now. She's incredibly sweet and caring, eager to assist both her classmates and teachers. Her favorite food is pasta, and her favorite thing at school is coloring. So give it for Ivana. Now we have Emmett Williams from Frank Russian. Now, her teacher nominated and shared she is very hard worker in her class and does her best. She sets an excellent example for her classmates. Her character shines through in everything she does. She treats everyone with respect. She's also a busy girl. She's in Girls on the Run, as you can tell, Student Council, and Strings. She is wonderful in making friends, and when she grows up, she wants to be an astronaut. So let's give it to her. All right, next we have Amy Martinez Vasquez. She is from Argentine Middle School student, very enthusiastic, insightful. I'm proud to say she has all straight A's in her classes. Yes, and this is a testament to her hard work and commitment. She's set apart by her strong leadership skills. She is remarkable at being collaborative and helping others stand out and shine. She has a positive attitude, and when she grows up, she'll be a dentist or a doctor. And we had a tie this month, so we have another middle school student, Anthony Garcia Gonzalez. He is from Eisenhower, and he has a radiant and infectious personality that uplifts his peers and his teachers alike. He has a collaborative spirit and is willing to support his classmates, and that's what makes him a valuable team member. He enhances the learning environment and inspires all those around him to strive for excellence. When he grows up, he wants to be an actor. He doesn't care if it's drama, but if you ask his family, they'll say he should be a comedian. Audrey Hearn from Washington High School. Now, this is exciting, because this is another first. We had four teachers nominate Audrey. So they put her in the area of Positive Behavior and Citizenship categories. She's bright, witty, funny, and intelligent. She's part of our T C program. She can't wait to travel with the program. She has just the best positive personality, willing to give to her community and those around her. When she grows up, she said, she's open to whatever comes her way. And this concludes our celebration.
Thank you, Dr. Lucero. Congratulations to all of our scholars, to your families, and to all of our staff who support you. We're gonna take a brief recess while we do some quick photos with all of our amazing scholars. Thank you.
Okay, thank you again. Congratulations to all of our scholars, to our staff and your families. It's always great to be able to celebrate all of your accomplishments. So, we're going to continue on with our agenda. Item three, we don't have any community comment today, but again, just a reminder, if you'd like to sign up, please see our board clerk or reach out to our board clerk before the board meeting Monday at noon so we can get you on the agenda. Next agenda, item board, we have item four, our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Mr. Lopez, before you approve, I'd like to ask that you remove item J because I have some questions, please.
Is it item J?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anything else? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item J?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions?
The removal of item J, does that con— would we need to have an exec session for that item depending on...
I don't know.
We might just—
Because—
Because it, yeah, I think that would—
It's not currently—
I think we might want to put that in, have an exec session on that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on the consent? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lopez, can I make a motion to add an executive session entailing land acquisition?
There a second?
Second.
Okay.
Question.
Yes.
Okay, will that cover everything because I had some questions. She just had the one on land acquisition, so will that cover everything?
If, um, go ahead.
The rationale or the intent of the executive session is to cover your questions. The document as it currently stands is not public, and so the questions would— until the board approves it, would still need to be confidential until the contract goes public.
Any additional questions? Okay. Ms. Smith, this is—we're voting to add an executive session, then we'll have to go into exec session to cover item J. So, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so is there a motion to recess to executive session to discuss land acquisition for...
Ten to fifteen.
We'll start with ten minutes. It went in at five thirty-five.
To include.
To include, thank you. Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Mr. Lilly, Dr. Campbell—
And Doug Clemens.
Mr. Clemens. Thank you. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, discussion? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're okay.
All right, motion to return to open session, please?
So moved.
Second. Moving seconded questions. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item J from the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any questions or discussion? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item J from the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any questions or discussion? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, no.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
I vote no because I believe this is a one-sided agreement that years before the president's staff got here, there were details and discussions, and so I believe that I made it clear that president's staff was not privy to these earlier conversations, but that too many times these discussions are not held with the members of the elected board, and now we're asked to vote, I vote no.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. Hey. Next board will jump to agenda item five. Before we go and open the public hearing, just really quickly wanted to share that this evening we're going to discuss and hear about the potential use of an alternative project delivery method for the bond, specifically the construction manager at-risk, CMAR, approach for projects resulting from the $180 million capital improvements bond that were approved by voters on November 5, 2024. We believe this method may offer substantial benefits in terms of time and cost savings and may also allow for more effective project management, given the complexity of the projects. In alignment with KSA 72-1154C, we invite members of the public to share their comments today during the public hearing regarding our intention to use this alternative project delivery method. Your input is valuable as we consider the most effective and responsible path forward. So we want to thank you to our community. Again, thank you for going out to vote, and thank you for engagement and perspectives on this important decision that we'll discuss today. And just for everyone's, so everyone knows, right? A construction manager at-risk, CMAR oversees with district input both pre-construction planning and construction, ensuring that the project stays within a guaranteed maximum price and meets quality standards. In the planning phase, the CMAR collaborates with the design team, streamline costs, anticipate challenges, and develop a realistic schedule. They then handle the bidding process for subcontractors, gathering competitive bids for trades like electrical and plumbing to ensure cost savings and quality. By managing subcontractors and coordinating their schedules, the CMAR reduces risk for the school district, protects the budget, and provides transparency. This approach ensures efficient project delivery with any savings under the GMP, which is the guaranteed maximum price, returned to the district, which maximizes the value of taxpayer funds. So with that, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the CMAR according to statute.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're in the open public hearing portion to hear about the construction manager at-risk process. Board, again, this is a time when we hear from any constituents who may be present who want to share their thoughts around this process. You didn't have to sign up prior to, so if you're here and you want to speak on that, you can approach the microphone. We would just ask to make sure that we have your information. Dr. Salinas Willock has a sign-up sheet to make sure that we gather your name and your contact information in case, so that we have that for the clerk's role. So you can come and speak. Would ask if there is anyone that wants to speak regarding the CMAR process to come forward. Yes, and as we do with our public comment, and as we did at the last public hearing, each person that is speaking will have three minutes to speak to the board on this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Pen Hicks, Wyandotte County. I'm going to speak for the community. I was not aware of your proposal to do a CMAR, was not familiar with the process, and am just hearing about it now. When I looked at the agenda, there was no information attached to it to explain what that was. So I'm going to ask that we receive more information so that the community can be made aware of what exactly this process will entail, and also to find out if there has been chosen a construction company to provide those services. I presume that that is a construction company's responsibility to handle those kinds of tasks for the school district. If there has been an open process for selecting a construction company to manage the program, to manage the projects, if that has been also decided by the school district in the past, JE Dunn has been primarily the construction company that has managed the buildings that have been built for this district. Don't know if there has been an open process to determine that yet, so I would be interested in getting more information about that before the night is over, if you would. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Would invite, if there's anyone else that would like to speak on the CMAR process, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, or if there's anyone online, I don't have the online open. Ms. Smith, is there anyone online? Hearing none. Would entertain a motion to close the public hearing for a construction manager at-risk pursuant to statute.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any questions or discussion? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
I vote no because I believe this is a one-sided agreement that years before the president's staff got here, there were details and discussions, and so I believe that I made it clear that president's staff was not privy to these earlier conversations, but that too many times these discussions are not held with the members of the elected board, and now we're asked to vote, I vote no.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. Hey. Next board will jump to agenda item five. Before we go and open the public hearing, just really quickly wanted to share that this evening we're going to discuss and hear about the potential use of an alternative project delivery method for the bond, specifically the construction manager at-risk, CMAR, approach for projects resulting from the $180 million capital improvements bond that were approved by voters on November 5, 2024. We believe this method may offer substantial benefits in terms of time and cost savings and may also allow for more effective project management, given the complexity of the projects. In alignment with KSA 72-1154C, we invite members of the public to share their comments today during the public hearing regarding our intention to use this alternative project delivery method. Your input is valuable as we consider the most effective and responsible path forward. So we want to thank you to our community. Again, thank you for going out to vote, and thank you for engagement and perspectives on this important decision that we'll discuss today. And just for everyone's, so everyone knows, right? A construction manager at-risk, CMAR oversees with district input both pre-construction planning and construction, ensuring that the project stays within a guaranteed maximum price and meets quality standards. In the planning phase, the CMAR collaborates with the design team, streamline costs, anticipate challenges, and develop a realistic schedule. They then handle the bidding process for subcontractors, gathering competitive bids for trades like electrical and plumbing to ensure cost savings and quality. By managing subcontractors and coordinating their schedules, the CMAR reduces risk for the school district, protects the budget, and provides transparency. This approach ensures efficient project delivery with any savings under the GMP, which is the guaranteed maximum price, returned to the district, which maximizes the value of taxpayer funds. So with that, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the CMAR according to statute.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're in the open public hearing portion to hear about the construction manager at-risk process. Board, again, this is a time when we hear from any constituents who may be present who want to share their thoughts around this process. You didn't have to sign up prior to, so if you're here and you want to speak on that, you can approach the microphone. We would just ask to make sure that we have your information. Dr. Salinas Willock has a sign-up sheet to make sure that we gather your name and your contact information in case, so that we have that for the clerk's role. So you can come and speak. Would ask if there is anyone that wants to speak regarding the CMAR process to come forward. Yes, and as we do with our public comment, and as we did at the last public hearing, each person that is speaking will have three minutes to speak to the board on this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Pen Hicks, Wyandotte County. I'm going to speak for the community. I was not aware of your proposal to do a CMAR, was not familiar with the process, and am just hearing about it now. When I looked at the agenda, there was no information attached to it to explain what that was. So I'm going to ask that we receive more information so that the community can be made aware of what exactly this process will entail, and also to find out if there has been chosen a construction company to provide those services. I presume that that is a construction company's responsibility to handle those kinds of tasks for the school district. If there has been an open process for selecting a construction company to manage the program, to manage the projects, if that has been also decided by the school district in the past, JE Dunn has been primarily the construction company that has managed the buildings that have been built for this district. Don't know if there has been an open process to determine that yet, so I would be interested in getting more information about that before the night is over, if you would. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Would invite, if there's anyone else that would like to speak on the CMAR process, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, or if there's anyone online, I don't have the online open. Ms. Smith, is there anyone online? Hearing none. Would entertain a motion to close the public hearing for a construction manager at-risk pursuant to statute.
So moved. I have a question. Okay, and I might have let that pass. I probably should have said it briefly went over. I didn't know if we would have a chance to make a comment.
Yes, so once we close, I'm going to ask Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Lilly to share the actual timeline. So the board did receive, and you should have received, information regarding the timeline, next steps, what that process will look like. So I'm going to ask if we can share that information openly, so it'll address some of the questions asked by our constituents today. And then you'll have an opportunity, the board will have an opportunity to ask any questions. We do have to formally approve this use, which is next on the agenda.
And to her question, will that go on our Facebook page? Will we print it in various newspapers so that people can see? Because people don't know, and they voted for it, and they ought to know what they're voting for and what they're getting. They're bang for their buck.
Yes, and I believe that'll be covered here shortly in the comments provided by staff.
But I'm saying, for those who aren't listening or watching, will something go out where they can see it?
Yes.
And something tangible that they can have in their hands and look at and deal with?
Yes, absolutely, Ms. Brownlee Page, and we're going to share that process and where that's going to happen.
Is there a time limit on when they'll get that information?
Yes, that's going to be shared with us after.
Okay, I know we're getting it today, but for the people who aren't here, how soon will they get it?
I mean, don't we need to close the hearing before we?
So we're going to get to those questions. You're going to have that opportunity, I promise we're not skipping those questions.
We just need to close.
We just need to close the public hearing portion.
Okay, well, I get that. I'm just saying, I want to make sure.
Okay.
Because we get accused sometimes, and they're just kicking it down the road. Well, will they come back, and will this be addressed?
May have a motion to close the public hearing for a construction manager at-risk pursuant to statute.
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, any questions? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Lilly, you've heard some of the questions, both from our constituent today and from Ms. Brownlee Page. Would just ask if you could share, and again, this was shared to the board via email earlier this week. I do just want to share that the public notice regarding this process was put out in the call earlier this month as well, so it has been out there for tonight and on our Facebook page. But Mr. Lilly, if you could just share a bit more about the process, the timeline, what we do know. I know there are still some unknowns in that, but if you could just share what we have, and then we'll answer any further questions we have.
While he's coming, we will, for those of you who were in the district or in the community with the last bond, or at least my experience, we will, as these things are approved, we're in the position where like this wasn't approved, so we wouldn't put it out there, but we will put out the information around the timeline on our website and in our regular publications. So when we send out things to our students in the community and those who are signed up. Evan, what is the publication that the community can sign up for?
Education Connection.
Education Connection.
Excellence at a glance.
Excellence at a glance. All of this information, as decisions are made, we will include that in our regular publications and have it on our social media. And as when it is called for, or if somebody is wanting to do an article on it, we will provide that information to the different news outlets, but we don't necessarily control those unless you're like buying ads or something, and that's a little different process. But we will make it available and share it publicly in every way that we can.
Evening, Mr. Lilly.
Sure. We've started off with a timeline of all events and what will be happening. On the document that you've got, it's got the CMAR solicitation timeline and the architect solicitation timeline. We will open up an RFQ for both architect and construction management at-risk tomorrow with approval of our hearing tonight. That will be open, the RFQ process will be open from until 12:01. There will be a committee that will review the RFQs, will shortlist, and for both architects and construction managers. Thank you. So we're in the open public hearing portion to hear about the construction manager at risk process. Board, again, this is a time when we hear from any constituents who may be present who want to share their thoughts around this process. You didn't have to sign up prior to, so if you're here and you want to speak on that, you can approach the microphone. We would just ask to make sure that we have your information. Dr. Salinas Willock has a sign-up sheet to make sure that we gather your name and your contact information in case, so that we have that for the clerk's role. So you can come and speak. Would ask if there is anyone that wants to speak regarding the CMAR process to come forward. Yes, and as we do with our public comment, and as we did at the last public hearing, each person that is speaking will have three minutes to speak to the board on this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Pen Hicks, Wanda County. I'm going to speak for the community. I was not aware of your proposal to do a CMAR, was not familiar with the process, and am just hearing about it now. When I looked at the agenda, there was no information attached to it to explain what that was, so I'm going to ask that we receive more information so that the community can be made aware of what exactly this process will entail, and also to find out if there has been chosen a construction company to provide those services. I presume that that is a construction company's responsibility to handle those kinds of tasks for the school district. If there has been an open process for selecting a construction company to manage the program, to manage the projects, if that has been also decided by the school district in the past, JE Dunn has been primarily the construction company that has managed the buildings that have been built for this district. Don't know if there has been an open process to determine that yet, so I would be interested in getting more information about that before the night is over, if you would. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Would invite, if there's anyone else that would like to speak on the CMAR process, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, or if there's anyone online, I don't have the online open. Ms. Smith, is there anyone online? Hearing none. Would entertain a motion to close the public hearing for a construction manager at risk pursuant to statute.
So moved.
I have a question. Okay, and I might have let that pass. I probably should have said it. You briefly went over. I didn't know if we would have a chance to make a comment.
Yeah, so once we close, I'm going to ask Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Lilly to share the actual timeline. So the board did receive, and you should have received, information regarding the timeline, next steps, what that process will look like. So I'm going to ask if we can share that information openly, so it'll address some of the questions asked by our constituents today. And then you'll have an opportunity, the board will have an opportunity to ask any questions. We do have to formally approve this use, which is next on the agenda.
And to her question, will that go on our Facebook page? Will we print it in various newspapers so that people can see? Because people don't know, and they voted for it, and they ought to know what they're voting for and what they're getting. They're bang for their buck.
Yes, and I believe that'll be covered here shortly in the comments, provided by staff.
But I'm saying, for those who aren't listening or watching, will something go out where they can see it in something tangible that they can have in their hands and look at and deal with?
Yes, absolutely, Ms. Brownlee Page, and we're going to share that process and where that's going to happen.
Is there a time limit on when they'll get that information?
Yes, that's going to be shared with us after.
Okay, I know we're getting it today, but for the people who aren't here, how soon will they get it?
I mean, don't we need to close the hearing before we?
So we're going to get to those questions. You're going to have that opportunity. I promise we're not skipping those questions.
We just need to close.
We just need to close the public hearing portion.
Okay, well, I get that. I'm just saying, I want to make sure.
Okay.
Because we get accused sometimes, and they're just kicking it down the road. Well, will they come back, and will this be addressed?
May have a motion to close the public hearing for a construction manager at risk pursuant to statute.
So moved.
Seconded. Any questions? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Allen Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Lilly, you've heard some of the questions, both from our constituent today and from Ms. Brownlee Page. Would just ask if you could share, and again, this was shared to the board via email earlier this week. I do just want to share that the public notice regarding this process was put out in the call earlier this month as well, so it has been out there for tonight and on our Facebook page. But, Mr. Lilly, if you could just share a bit more about the process, the timeline, what we do know. I know there are still some unknowns in that, but if you could just share what we have, and then we'll answer any further questions we have.
While he's coming, we will, for those of you who were in the district or in the community with the last bond, or at least my experience, we will, as these things are approved, we're in the position where, like, this wasn't approved, so we wouldn't put it out there, but we will put out the information around the timeline on our website and in our regular publications. So when we send out things to our students in the community and those who are signed up, Edwin, what is the publication that the community can sign up for? Education Connection. Excellence at a Glance. All of this information, as decisions are made, we will include that in our regular publications and have it on our social media. And when it is called for, or if somebody is wanting to do an article on it, we will provide that information to the different news outlets, but we don't necessarily control those unless you're, like, buying ads or something, and that's a little different process. But we will make it available and share it publicly in every way that we can.
Evening, Mr. Lilly.
Sure. We've started off with a timeline of all events and what will be happening. On the document that you've got, it's got the CMAR solicitation timeline and the architect solicitation timeline. We will open up an RFQ for both architect and construction management at risk tomorrow with approval of our hearing tonight. That will be open, the RFQ process will be open from until 12/1. There will be a committee that will review the RFQs, will shortlist, and for both architects and construction managers, will, after the committee narrows it down to no more than five, no less than three, we will then issue an RFP that will include pricing, a lot more detail kind of scope of work, how they would approach it. Again, there will be an open process. Once that is complete, there will be an evaluation, an interview session with the finalists. After that, there will be a recommendation to the Board of Education. We are anticipating and hoping to have that recommendation to the board by the January 26th board meeting.
So just for clarity, for Ms. Hicks' direct question, so no, nothing has been determined, and within this process on the committee, when we started this process, like, a year ago for other things, there are three board members who are part of the interview in the selection of that, and currently on the facilities committee, it was Ms. Russell, Dr. Nguyen, and the other third spot was Ms. Humphries, and she's no longer here, so the board will have to determine. I can't remember if somebody else was appointed to the committee, but those are the three board members who would, unless they decline or offer it to somebody else, who would be a part of the committee along with staff to review and interview that and bring the recommendation to the board, to the full board.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Ms. Russell.
Mr. Lilly, I just wanted to clarify, also going back to Ms. Hicks' question, the CMAR is just the construction manager, so they are just managing the projects, not necessarily the CMAR that is selected is the one who is building the project. That's correct?
The CMAR will be responsible for both.
But I thought the CMAR puts out the bids for the projects.
They'll, and Doug, you might want to help.
I'm so sorry. I might have confused it.
They'll be subcontracting out.
Okay. And so I think the heart of the question goes back to the process around local minority small businesses being supported in this process of selection, or being a part of the money handing out. I can't think of a better word right now. And so I think there's that clarity that is wanted around, how do we ensure? I think you got my question. Thank you.
Wayne Correll, purchasing director. So part of the construction manager at risk responsibility will be community outreach and for minority and local vendors to draw them to the table. State of Kansas, we have to award to the lowest responsible bidder, lowest, most responsive to the specifications, and so can't award any kind of preference for vendor, local, depending on, like, a 1% for local, but it will be their responsibility to make sure that we get as wide an outreach as we can to draw minority, local, and disadvantaged, other disadvantaged.
All right, and I think my follow-up question is, in the RFP, and I'm not sure about the RFQ process, there are things that we can add to that process to ensure that there is attention to those categories mentioned, and that is a commitment that I'm making as the chair, but also I think many of the other board members have had that same conversation, and that's your understanding as well.
And so I'll give you all, I'll send them to Leslie so she can upload them, so you can read them, the RFQ and RFPs as they are written right now.
Ms. Brownlee Page.
Yeah, I know what the state says, but it's a little disheartening on the last bond when you go out and you see these groundbreaking ceremonies, and then you see the people who come to do it, and what does that say to our kids? You look out, you don't see yourself, and I think we need to, I don't know if we can ask, but, you know, what's the makeup of your staff? Because they need to see some diversity.
Right.
And it doesn't make sense, these same hard-working people that we tax, who pay their hard-earned money, they need to see some representation.
I'll send you the solicitation documents, and I'll take your feedback and do what I can.
I appreciate that, but again, we keep teaching these kids, and they don't see it, and it's hard to look at that and just wonder, man, what is going on? You see no women, you see no Asian, you don't see many Hispanics. There should be some diversity.
In the last bond, we had a committee that met pretty consistently regarding the minority and disadvantaged vendor outreach, and I'm sure we'll do the same thing on this one.
Additional thoughts or questions?
I think one point of clarity around the CMAR process, when the RFQs or RFPs go out, it doesn't necessarily, just for clarity, because I think the last time it was awarded, like, one company got all the projects, and that's not, like, how it has to be, nor does the board have to just select one. So I just wanted to give a point of clarity. It does not, that's not a requirement, like, only one construction company gets all of the projects. You can have multiple ones. So Wayne, can you speak to that? Because I think that's, yeah.
The solicitation itself says one or more than one, depending on, you know, what the evaluation committee determines.
Yes, so I just wanted to clarify.
No, I get that, but historically, we have not seen that, so hopefully this will be a new beginning. We'll see that, but it has never happened.
And I respect that.
And that's why people, I get what you're saying, I respect what you say. I'm just saying, and this was before your tenure, it has never happened.
And I think that's why we adopted the new process that actually include board members on the selection committee to make the determination. So we have heard from the community and heard from board members based off of that before the bond even passed with other projects that we've done, so that's our commitment to being transparent and around it and engaging multiple perspectives in the selection of the individuals who are bidding for the projects.
Thank you. Any additional questions, discussion? Hearing none. It's recommended Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the intent to use alternative delivery method for construction manager at risk to manage the bond projects as required by KSA 72-1154, submitted by Mr. Correll, Director of Purchasing, Mr. Lilly, Chief Operations Officer, and recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded for the questions, discussion. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Allen Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
I'll vote yes, but I hope and pray that we do what we just heard them say they're going to do, because people are working too hard, this is hard-earned money, and they approved it, and they need our support, and they need us to show that we're going to do this.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, and I would just, again, since that's been approved tonight, making sure that we put the timeline or those key dates on our website. I think our bond page is still active, and we can put that in there, put that in the FAQs, make sure it's in the next education magazine, if it's timely. I know it's got to go out at a certain time, and our social media, so just making sure we get that out there to our community. Ms. Russell.
Yeah, I just wanted to, as Dr. Stubblefield mentioned, me and Dr. Nguyen are currently the only two people on that committee. I don't know if there's interest from anyone on the board to join this process or to join the facilities committee, but I wanted to get what would be the thing that we would need to do if someone else wanted to participate. What is the process? I know at the organization meeting, we had, there's a process, but I didn't know at this point.
Yeah. I think, so I'll say, and Mr. Goheen, correct me if I'm wrong, I think if folks are interested in, did we not appoint somebody?
I think you.
I thought, I think I'm on that. I think because we, Ms. Humphries wasn't here in July, so I think we had to fill that group. So we'll check, Ms. Smith, if you could check to see who that third board member, if we did, and if we did not, I think if folks, if you have an interest, let Ms. Smith know, and then we can bring that to the full board to make sure that, at the December meeting, that that's discussed and properly done. So, Mr. Goheen, I just want to make sure I'm not doing anything out of order.
No, I think that's a perfectly acceptable approach. I'd check first to see if you already have somebody appointed.
Yeah. I believe we did. I believe that's me, Ms. Smith, but if you could confirm, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I just want to be clear, we're going to confirm the members based on the July meeting minutes, and then if there was not another member appointed or selected, we're going to, any recommendations or nominations will come forth at the December meeting.
And I guess I would say, I don't know if it was at the July meeting or not, because she's been gone from the board for a while, so it may have been prior to that.
Yeah, it may have been, but yes.
Well, we read.
The question is, I think the question is, are there three members appointed right now? If there are, based on the clerk's records, then those are the three individuals. If not, then you need to appoint to fill the vacancy.
Thank you.
And we'll bring that at the December board meeting.
Well, I just want to say, we may need to do it at one of the special meetings before that, because timeline-wise, to, like, schedule interviews with all of that. So we may, my recommendation would be to do it at the budget meeting next Friday, if somebody is not committed, so that they can, my dates may be wrong, but so that they can start to schedule the, like, it's a lot of people's schedule involved, so it's on people's calendars.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, we're going to continue with our agenda next. Our board agenda, item six, would invite Ms. Carol Levers, and as we hear about our Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries Salary Schedule update.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Stubblefield.
Good evening.
We shared all information on our salary scale, or schedule, and asked the board to approve our request. We are here for any questions to be answered, or if you want me just to go over it quickly, just to...
I'd open up, if there are any questions for Ms. Levers regarding the library salary schedule as recommended. If not, I entertain a motion that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the new public library system salary schedule is submitted by Ms. Levers, is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
Now, once this gone over, I thought there was going to be an effort to merge our current person who deals with the budget, with the librarian budget, so they could be on one accord. Have they had those kind of conversations?
Yes, so this, what you see with the schedule, the presentations, the follow-up, the FAQ and appeal was done in conjunction with the HR team here. So they worked collaboratively to do all of this, and then moving forward, they'll continue to collaborate so that it is a seamless process for all of the employees.
And then after we vote on it, then they will go and do a presentation so that everybody's on one accord.
They have a, yeah, so they have a communication plan for the library staff, and then they also, once the staff, it's shared, it'll be shared with them where they will be placed prior to January 1st, and then there's, if someone doesn't agree, there is an appeals process for them to show, so that if they have some evidence that we, the HR didn't have, they'll have an opportunity to appeal, similar to what we did with the school classified staff in July and August, yes.
We plan, after board's approval, to have, we're having an in-service tomorrow with all staff, so if it's approved, that's where we will share, and then obviously Friday, each one will get their letters.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin.
Yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our library staff and our HR team who have worked diligently, and to our board members who have kept us accountable to bring this forward before the end of the calendar year. Appreciate all of your work and help in making sure that we do this right by our staff, so thank you for that.
Thank you, board. Appreciate it.
Okay, board, next, we are in Agenda Item Number Seven. If you recall at the last board meeting, we reviewed briefly our 2024-2025 legislative priorities. They're back before you tonight for your review and adoption, if you so choose to do so. This will help us also during our breakfast with our colleagues in December to talk about our legislative platform. So as recommended, the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the legislative agenda and priorities for the upcoming 2425 legislative session, submitted by Mr. Edwin Birch and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there questions or discussion? I would just say thank you to our legislators and to our representatives, Dr. Nguyen and newly-elected Ms. Brownlee Page, for your service. It is going to be a tough session, it always is, and just appreciate your advocacy on behalf of our students and families and community here, and to everybody who has a part in that. And as we face a lot of changes in 2025, these efforts are going to be extremely necessary, and as, I think as a board, it is our responsibility to make sure that we're doing all that we can to protect our students and families and our community with any potential changes that may happen at the national, federal level that will impact us here locally. It is now just as important as ever for us to do our due diligence and make sure that we're protecting all students and all of our community. Any additional comments or questions? None. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, and I also just wanted to note, if you haven't RSVP'd for the YCO Legislative Breakfast on Wednesday, December 4th, please make sure you do so. Thank you.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Thank you, board. Motion carries. Next, board, we will have our board report on our KISA implementation and outcome updates. Dr. Conrad and team are coming forward. Hopefully you had a chance, board, to review the PowerPoint. I know they're going to go through it, it was quite a bit of information that they're going to share tonight. We'll have time for questions. If you have questions during, I'm sure they wouldn't mind a quick question or two, but we'll definitely have time after the presentation for questions, comments, discussion. So good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Buenas noches. Board President Lopez, Vice President Russell, Superintendent Dr. Stubblefield, esteemed board members, dedicated staff, and valued community members. I'm Dr. Danita Fernandez Flores, Executive Director of College and Career Instructional Programs. Joining me tonight are colleagues from the DERA Department and Student Services and Family Supports, in collaboration with Leadership and Learning Team, as we share the outcome data related to the Kansas Education System of Accreditation. Our commitment to every student's success is unwavering, as evidenced by our goal that 100% of our student graduate with a diploma plus endorsement. This commitment is to ensure that each student is well-prepared for their post-secondary journey. The commitment to the North Star is supported by Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools KISA System School Improvement Process. This process uses a multi-tiered approach to support continuous improvement, from district-wide goals to individual school plans, to ultimately support classroom and student learning and outcomes. Our district... Our district strategic priorities provide clarity to the work of all departments in support of our board goals. There is a strong alignment between our strategic plan and KISA 2.0, as you see here in the four fundamentals. Our district's three priorities directly align with the KISA's model of the four fundamentals from the previous slide. As we look deeper and review our board goal themes, outcome areas, Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools identified measures to monitor progress listed here. We will now review each outcome area goals and lead measures. For Kansas City, Kansas kindergarten outcome area, the focus is the retention of numeracy and literacy skills in our preschools four-year-olds. Our post-secondary outcome area is clearly defined and teams monitor progress monthly. The high school outcome area is tracked through the Kansas Assessment Program. To achieve our long-term vision, there are established annual benchmarks. They'll keep us accountable to progress. Dr. Lucero will present the next slides.
Good evening, board.
Evening.
For prioritizing social-emotional learning as an outcome area, we are laying a strong foundation for academic success. Our benchmark goals serve as key indicators, measuring our progress and creating a positive and supporting learning environment. We have just shared our guiding frameworks, our outcome areas and our goals. The whole child is supported through our multi-tiered system support to ensure that each student receives the personalized support they need. This framework fosters equity, continuous data improvement and collaboration among educators, ultimately creating an inclusive environment where every child can thrive academically and socially, and also using behavioral health supports and attendance programs. Dr. Conrad will share the KISA outcomes in these areas.
Good evening, board. I'm Dr. Conrad. Um, I have the pleasure of sharing, uh, some of the outcomes from last school year and going into this school year. Uh, so with our kindergarten readiness goal, uh, we could see here that in prior years, our preschool class came in a little higher academically than our current school year, which is the dark blue bar, 2025. Uh, and so if we follow these trends, uh, we have to be on alert that because our students are coming in a little lower this year than they have in previous years, uh, we need to put forth additional efforts and, uh, put in additional things in place to ensure that we continue to grow and that we do not see such a significant dip, uh, in our data. We also see this, sorry, we also see this with our onset sounds, um, that our students are coming in slightly lower. And if we follow the trends, uh, where we want them to be at the end, um, is their kindergarten year, the fall of kindergarten. Um, we need to ensure that we put additional things in place to make sure that we are on track for that. When we look at counting objects as the goal, we see that our students are actually coming in higher here. And this is a terrific, uh, trend that we're seeing, and we need to keep this going as we continue to build on this throughout the school year, uh, and then leading into their fall kindergarten year. So we can see the cohort trends over time, uh, and where we're heading there with our kindergarten readiness goals. Our average daily attendance goal, we are currently exceeding that goal. Uh, we had a goal set for, uh, 90% at the end of the year. As, uh, our trajectory shows that we are increasing over time, we are currently exceeding that, uh, goal. So we're going to continue our efforts to make sure that we stay on track. Chronic absenteeism, we're seeing the same thing. We are well below, uh, currently. Uh, and so all of our efforts, we need to continue those efforts to ensure that we stay on track. Uh, so we're doing really well there. Behavior incidents, it's the same story. Uh, we are seeing, uh, marketed improvements here. Uh, and so we look to be lower at the end of this year than our five-year goal. Uh, and so we're, we're doing exceptionally well in this area and need to, uh, continue on. Our suspension goal, uh, we are, uh, definitely excelling in this area. Uh, and so our suspensions are very low right now. We are on track to be, at the end of the school year, about 850 suspensions, which is significantly lower than we have been in the past and, um, half of what our five-year goal actually is. And so this is terrific to see. Our post-secondary goal, as it was explained on the opening slides, uh, we are exceeding our expectations there as well. Uh, and a really fantastic note that our graduation goal, uh, is also two years, about two years ahead of schedule of where we plan to be. And we're at, actually at 77.8%. Um, we had some adjustments in there as the window was closing, uh, but as these slides were finalizing. Uh, and so we are about at the two-year goal. We're two years ahead of our goal here. So we are doing phenomenal things, uh, when it comes to our graduation as well. Uh, our academics, uh, we did not meet, uh, the ELA cap goal that we had for a 3% reduction in Level Ones. Uh, but that wasn't across the board. 14 of our buildings did meet this goal. Uh, seven other buildings did see a reduction. And so there are good things that are going on that we are attempting to replicate, uh, and build on. Um, and the same story with math cap. Again, uh, we didn't meet it as a district, but we saw 13 buildings that did meet that goal with a additional 10 that saw a reduction, just not the 3% reduction that we were shooting for. Uh, science, similar trend. Here we had, uh, 25 buildings that did see a reduction. 21 of those buildings, um, did meet the goal in the science reduction. So there are good things going on that we are exploring and implementing. Uh, there will be some changes coming up to the state assessment. So this year, we're getting a new state assessment. They're setting new cut scores. Uh, and so we are not going to get these results until at the earliest August. And so once the cuts are set this summer, they then have to take it to the State Board of Education for a final approval. It's slated to go to the State Board of Education in August. That can change as well. And so we won't get final results until after it's got, been approved by the State Board of Education, and then they'll release it to us. And so some of this information might be a little delayed next school year, uh, because they're setting new cuts. We anticipate we're also going to see new percentages in each of the categories since we are adjusting the cut levels. Uh, and so with that, that is our KISA goal section and how we're doing on those KISA outcomes. We're also going to talk about some of the things that we're implementing and monitoring. And so I'm going to turn it back over, uh, to Dr. Lucero to talk about some of the things that we're implementing, and then we'll dive into the data around that as well.
So the MTSS framework is implemented through these programs. High-quality instruction and professional learning communities work together to focus on academics and trauma-informed social-emotional learning. Avid, avid and restorative practice work together to support schools to have positive learning environments. SIUP and letters both provide strong instructional routines and language development. Attend to achieve ensures that our students are in school, and student code of conduct maintains equitable school environments and responses to students. Now, Dr. Conrad will share the, the impact of the implementations of these programs.
So the reason that we, uh, broke up the presentation this way, uh, I'm going to go into analogy here really quick. Um, it's my favorite sports season. It's basketball, so you're going to have to suffer through a basketball analogy. Somebody's not going to be suffering. I like that.
Yeah.
The, the KISA outcome goals really are the final score. It's very hard to coach a team if you just show them the final score. Uh, there's things that they're doing throughout the game that we need to adjust. Now, just like basketball, not college, but, you know, NBA or high school, there's four quarters. Uh, just like a school system, we have four quarters. Uh, and so some of the data that we're going to see is going to be that quarter data, which is correlated to the outcome score. If there's a large deficit, right, you're unlikely to meet those goals at the end. You're unlikely to win the game, right? That final score isn't going to be what you want. But there's things that we need to pay attention to during the game, rebounding, uh, turnovers, shot selection. There's those things that really impact it that we're coaching throughout. And the things that we're implementing are those things that we're coaching throughout. And we have to monitor and make sure we're doing those things, and then we get a quarter score. How are we doing? Uh, is it working? Are the rebounding working? Is our SEL program working? So that's the analogy that I, I kind of want, uh, to lay the framework because we have, um, put schools in these implementation phases. How well are you doing the things that, uh, the board is supporting us in doing? And so there's installation, and this is where buildings are just starting the process. Okay, we have about 25 of those buildings where they are, are putting into place the things we're asking them to do. Then initial implementation, staff have been trained, they're doing the things, we're watching it. We have about 16 of those buildings. So now we're saying, if you are doing those things, is in fact your scores where we need them to be at the end? Are you winning at the quarter? Because that's tied to the outcome. And so when we look at the outcomes, here, we're looking at our district benchmark assessments. So here's a quarter point. We want to know if you're doing the things that we're asking you to do with fidelity. Are we seeing some results? So the percentage of students at mastery on the ELA district benchmark assessments. We see that the schools that are initially implementing the things that we're asking them to do, they have a higher percentage of students at the mastery level. This is what we're expecting to see. As you do those small things, as you do the little things every day, we have better results. That's what we're looking for. We see the same thing with our math DBAs. Although the, the margin isn't as wide, the margin is there. As we're doing those things, we're seeing that more students are at the mastery level. Fastbridge also gives us another data point, and we are looking for, if you're doing those things, are we seeing better results? And we see that we have a higher percentage of our students scoring in low-risk and college pathway when you're implementing the things that we are asking you to implement. We see the same results when it comes to math, the A math. And then when we break it down by building level, we're also looking, is this working at all levels? Our elementaries, our middles, our high schools? Uh, we are seeing that they are. We break it down by ELL status. Is it working for all of our ELL students? We have three groups here. We have never ELL. Those are our native English speakers that have never entered the ELL program. We have former ELL students, those that have exited out of ELL programming. And then we have current ELL students. We're seeing that our former ELL students are excelling. They are doing better than even our never ELL students. But we are still seeing that our ELL students are very close, and maybe programming isn't working as well for them, or maybe there's additional things that we need to do there. So it's an area for us to explore. When we look at disability status, students with disability and students without disability, when you are implementing the things that we are asking you to implement, we do see a difference of mastery level. Uh, when we break it down by race, again, we're seeing the same results. And so as we continue through these slides, we see a pattern, and that's what we're looking for so that we know how to better support buildings, if it's working or not working. When we look at the math district benchmark assessments, um, on slide 39, we're seeing that former ELL students, while still excelling above the other two groups, we see it switch. That raises questions for us that we can now explore. We're asking you to rebound. You're getting all the rebounds. Why isn't the outcome, what combination there do we need to look at to make sure that it's working? And so this is a point for us, now that we're at a quarter and we can look at this data, we can now make adjustments within the game. Uh, we see the percent math DBA for, uh, students with disability as well. Uh, and then when we look at slide 41 for percent math mastery by race and ethnicity, we see that American Indian or Alaska Native, where there is a small N count, we are seeing a large difference there. And so we believe that, uh, just the law of small numbers is really impacting those percentages, but it's still something to explore for us, uh, to make sure we make those adjustments. Uh, when we look at Fastbridge, uh, high school really stands out here uh, because it is significantly different. But we also know that, uh, a group of our students go to one school, and if that school is implementing, um, then it does impact, uh, that score. So are some of our students who are traditionally doing better, that's why they get accepted into the program. If they're also implementing other things, we do see a wider gap there. Um, when it comes to reading, we see that our ELL group, um, is, is a group that we need to continue to focus on, uh, how to build that skill set. And sometimes it's just time. It is time that they need in the classroom. It takes years to develop skills in that, um, second language or third. Um, and so when we look at disability status, we also see when you're implementing our stats, uh, our programs, it is helping those with, uh, disabilities. And as we finish up here, um, on these final slides, we see this pattern, uh, going over and over again. It allows us to make these, uh, game time decisions, um, while we're still playing the game to assist our students along the way. Uh, and so with this, it does give us next steps and allows us to know how to move forward. Our programming is working for the vast majority of our situations. Uh, we are seeing progress. We're seeing a difference, and that helps us understand, uh, our next steps. And so I'm going to turn the time back over to Dr. Fernandez Flores, uh, to finish us out.
Schools and district departments, um, have made strides in implementing key strategies, including high-quality instructional materials, job-embedded professional learning. These are essential for creating the engaging and effective classrooms. Departments will continue to support buildings in embedding the high-quality instructional materials into daily classroom routines and promote the use of strong instructional strategies. To further enhance identified instructional practices, we will continue to provide ongoing professional learning on implementing the instructional routines. These routines align with the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools curriculum and support student learning in a struc- structured and systematic way. We will also maintain support for the avid elective and the instructional strategies that intersect with our core curriculum. Avid provides valuable tools and techniques that can benefit all students. Professional learning communities remain critical components of improvement efforts. By collaborating and professional learning communities, teachers can identify key learning goals, develop effective instructional strategies and share best practices. This collaborative approach fosters professional growth and enhances student outcomes. To ensure that all students have equitable access to the curriculum, our district will continue to implement SIUP model. This framework provides a structured approach to lesson planning and delivering, addressing the diverse needs of all of our, of learners. Letters training remains a valuable resource for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Teachers. By deepening their understanding of language and literacy development, teachers can provide targeted instruction that meets the need of all students. Attend to achieve is critical in ensuring our students attend school to receive instruction and support. There will be a continued focus on restorative practices because by addressing conflicts and building relationships, we can reduce disciplinary actions that can lead to absences and lead to a more positive and inclusive school environment. A well-enforced code of conduct supports equity and supports safe and more conducive learning environments as well. Finally, our building principals play a critical role in leading school improvement. Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools departments, led by leadership and learning, will continue to provide the supports the principals need through professional learning networks and side-by-side coaching, as well as walkthroughs with our instructional frameworks. And with that, we'll take any questions.
For the team, I'll open the floor for questions. Ms. Brownlee Page.
You, you gave some data where you said in terms of reading, 14 buildings were doing well. Seven did show a reduction. And then in math, 13 were doing well, and 10, there was some reduction. You said in science, you had 25 reduction and 21 didn't meet. So I, I'd like to know, the ones who did succeed, did you do research? What did they do that the others didn't do? And made them successful, I mean, I'd like to know that and that data.
I just want to offer one point of clarification, sinus, it was twenty-one who actually made the reduction. Um, ju- I just wanted to clarify that.
Oh, okay, tha- thank you, but I I I didn't see that data. That would really help us to try to understand because we did have people who did achieve it. So what did they do that was so unique that maybe the others they could share with? And I know every building is unique, they have different things. But in 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 going to some of the workshops that we went to for Q, they kept emphasizing empowering our schools to be a community hub and how we need to deal with food insecurities, that does affect learning. Mental and physical health, we're doing some things with that. And they talked about the technology grab, how so many in the district don't have it. So how can we pull all of that in and financial literacy that we need to teach that? And they had a number of schools that were sharing and why they were so successful because they began to address those issues. But I'd just like to know more about those schools who were successful. What did they do? And if we looked at all their data and then look at the ones who didn't and what we need to do to help them, and maybe they could share out, there are some commonalities and there are some differences. But I would like that and I don't know if you have that, but it would be nice to have. Why are they so successful?
So Ms. Page, and I'll let them jump in, but at the beginning, we talked about like schools who have fully, they're all doing the same things, right? Like all of the initiatives for all of the schools are big picture the same thing, but some schools are in different spots around it. So on the slide twenty-eight, when we said this school is in installation, like twenty-five buildings are in installation, initial implementation or full implementation. So when you look at the slide where they, we talked about like avid and all of those things, it depends on where that school is in those, like that's what we're unpacking first level. And then second level, we are looking to see if schools are doing something uniquely after that. And that's where when the principals have their PLCs and we're looking at the data that they are having those conversations. But I just wanted to say high-level that, but if there is something.
I get that, but we've been behind for a long time, prior to you coming. But we've been behind and there's a whole lot we got to do to try to catch up.
Right, um, one of the things that I will just remind everyone about, you you're correct, like there have been bright spots at in this district for a long time um in different areas. What we have been focused on, at least in the last four years, is really making sure that we are implementing those things that are working with fidelity, which is what led us to start to examine like how schools are implementing this, where are they at in this progress? And it's a learning curve for us too, so we are making adjustments as we go. But when we are talking about this, and I know like people don't like to talk about incremental progress, but if you're familiar with like a bamboo plant, um, here's another analogy. It takes like, if you plant a seed for a bamboo plant, it takes like four to six years before you see, like it's growing its roots, it's growing the foundation. And then once those things are in place, you see, it can grow like three feet in one day. So as we're looking at this data and we're seeing the progress around that, we do expect to see um great growth, like as adjustments are made and as things are happening. And we do see it um in several of our schools, like when the four schools were highlighted for um the awards that they got from the state, Sumner's highlighted. But we can, we're taking those things and looking at those things and looking at just not the tangible things, but also the things that you're talking about while the district, across the district, we have a lot of poverty. Certain schools are wrapping around and doing certain things with their families and you do start to see changes in those kind of things. So to your point, we are having those conversations and identifying those. And each quarter as we continue providing the data in this, we will be able to provide specific things. And our goal is to have schools who are doing exceptionally well to come and share, not only with their peers, but with the community and you, what they're doing so that we can continue to replicate that in the other schools so that we can see the growth.
So I was just gonna echo um Mrs. Page's request. I think um similar to the requests around when we are being asked to purchase items such as DigiCoach or whatever those instructional materials the board requested that we see um the ROI. I don't know that it has to be completely um sift through, but I think something when you're looking at the science or the math scores to say like, this correlates to the curriculum that we just purchased to utilize in the um. So even if you're just summarizing, like help us connect because in those requests for purchases, we're saying it ties to KISA goals. But I think in this presentation, I'd like to see like the implementation of this has helped us get to this place. Even if every building isn't doing it, I think we're still struggling to see the things that we're purchasing from curriculum have their um ROI be represented in our, um, not all of the numbers, but in some of them. And I think um some of them we've had for a while, we've had since COVID. And so I think those should be able to see the clear um return on investment if those ten or sixteen schools are implementing it and have had it since COVID. Like we should be able to say this is where that data comes from. So, yes.
So if I can, I I'd like to combine those two questions as well, especially with DigiCoach and doing the research behind it. It's very important for us to be able to monitor what is taking place and observing what is happening in the schools. DigiCoach is a tool that we use to to monitor that progress, right? To to know who's doing what and when and what impact that's having. And so when we put the schools in in those categories, it's because we are going to be doing those walkthroughs with DigiCoach, uncovering what's happening where and when and how that's connected to that quarter score. And so that's that's kind of how those things tie together. We need that tool in order to capture that data, to then do the research behind it, to tease out what's happening and what's not happening. And and so I I hope that helps you understand.
No, because she brought a valid point.
Because I.
She said it better than me. Give us where you use some of the things that we purchased and how it worked. That's what I'm asking.
So if you look at the slides, the thing that we talked about was, and I'm just saying high-level, avid lever- letters, Psyop, you invested in purchasing those schools that are in um full implementation. We don't have any schools in full implementation based off of where the uh program says. But if you look at the initial, and I don't know what slide it is.
I think, but and correct me if I'm wrong, avid is fully is, has been in multiple implementation for the high school level. I'm not really sure what's happening at the elementary, middle school level with avid. And the data that we're seeing on these scores comes from the non-high school. It would be the K through eight.
No, like avid is in some of our elementary school, like there in most of our elementary schools. But at, we started avid in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. According to avid, they have standards that you have to have in place. So when we look at certain schools, there are about sixteen buildings. When you put all of the things that we're doing together, because you can't do it in isolation, right? Because they're doing all of those things. We have sixteen buildings, if you look at slide twenty-eight, that are in initial implementation. Those buildings, when we look at the score, so all of the things that you're investing in, those buildings, the stu- more students are scoring at mastery and doing better on our assessments for those buildings that are there. And see, what and what I heard you saying, when we're bringing these things to you individually for renewal, you would like to see the ROI to say a hundred and fifty kids are in the avid class and this is how they're performing. And we can do that. We have been in some, if you go back and look at some of the things, we do attach the data around, like we've invested in this and this is how those students are performing. We can be more explicit and consistent, but that is um like where we are. So we can close the gap and make sure when we're bringing those things up for renewal, we are tying it to the ROI or whether it's something for SEL or a product, but and give you the number of students who actually are a part of it. If it's if it's the entire curriculum, like when we brought up, we'll be bringing math curriculum soon, but it will be new curriculum, I believe. But we can show you how the students were performing based off of the other math curriculum um from our scores and then let you know where they are within the implement- implementation stages around that. Because that will give us a full picture of the ROI with all of the things intersecting together because it's not done in isolation. Um, and we know that one thing alone is not necessarily moving the needle.
Okay. Going to another subject, chronic absenteeism. So I guess my ques- similar question. So when we got rid of Big Five, the platform that allowed us to kind of do the thing with the data where you manipulate the data or what have you, building level, um, grade level. So when you say there are only twenty-six buildings participating in the full implementation or wherever, I'm sorry, the initial, the middle part, why are there only twenty-six buildings if our overall district chronic absentee level is so high?
So there's sixteen in the uh initial implementation, we have sixteen in there because.
And there's ten in the middle.
It it's an aggregate of all the different programs. So we can have a lot more buildings in chronic, that's doing really well with chronic absenteeism, but it doesn't work in isolation. And so it's the combination of the other programs as well. Just because you're reducing chronic absenteeism doesn't mean that your scores are going to go up, right? There's other factors that go into increasing a score.
Okay, so I think two years ago, we had this conversation about how we talked, we specifically talked about how chronic absenteeism is going to help solve for a lot of our academic issues. I guess I'm concerned that now I only see twenty-six.
Rachel, I need clarity on what you're referring to, because all of our students participate, I mean, all of our schools are a part of attend to achieve, right? So that's how we, so when you're looking at, if if you're looking at slide twenty-eight, that's just where the schools fall. So third, we, those are all of our buildings, it's not including like our preschool, like when you see the, if you do the total, it is forty-one buildings. That's all of our schools. Twenty-five are still in installation.
Five, did you say it was again?
Twenty-eight. Like all of our schools, the initiatives that we are talking about, all of our schools have minimumly building leaders and appropriate staff receive professional development regarding the program.
So maybe my question is more, how long do people stay in the installation phase of this? If this is a practice we've been working on for two years, maybe that's my question. I think I'm just concerned that we're not further in this. And we've committed resources, we've committed um time, energy, talents. I guess I'm just, I'm just not understanding. And I keep hearing the things can't happen in a silo. But people, kids have to show up in order for us to move any of our needles.
Right, so so all of our, so all, like if you look at those definitions, it is telling you this is as a system where schools are as a whole. So it doesn't mean that all of our buildings are not doing attend to achieve. It just means that when you look at building leaders and the staff development and we look at their outcomes around that, it's, they're still in installation. And there's like, if they, we see the right progress in the levers. We just, uh, while we've been doing a lot of the programs for a few years, we just define these areas this year to help us to figure out the things that you're talking about. Like why is it the sixteen buildings are doing this at a faster rate and seeing movement in twenty-five or not? So we're unpacking those things with the building and looking at the data and the principal leaders are looking at their PLCs around that. So there are lots of factors that are impacting and inter- intersecting that. And your question is a good question, but that's that's what we're saying. We'll continue to unpack to figure it out so that we can move schools along. But that's um what, that's why we shifted to this. Because otherwise, we're just looking at the date, same data and saying, yep, this, this is where they are. But we have to do something differently in order to understand how are all of these things intersecting? Are we getting our ROI? And do we, what do we need to do differently? And why is it specifically impacting this subgroup of students? So when we look at our data of our students in like systems, like with school districts that have similar demographics for us, with us, just this year alone, our students outperform those districts. So we know that we're doing something right. We, and and we know that we're doing a lot of things right, but we also know that it's not okay for on ba- based off our own rating scale for twenty-five of our buildings to be in installation. So those are the conversations that we'll have with the building leaders, the teachers and evaluating like what professional development and things that we're doing.
Okay, and I guess I'm gonna hush after this, but I'm not gonna hush about chronic absenteeism. I want to understand slide eighteen. So in twenty twenty-four, we're, we said that our chronic absenteeism rate was thirty-eight point six? Or that's a trajectory scale?
No, that was our rate.
That was our rate. So we are saying that we can only reduce chronic absenteeism by two percent each year?
That was our goal.
Overall. So the data shows that our district needs to be twenty percent chronic, have a goal of twenty percent or less chronic absenteeism rate. What I'm currently seeing says that like it would take us until twenty forty almost before we would see substantial increase in our. And so I guess I'm just publicly saying that I'm challenging this goal. Um, what resources we need to help us get there sooner, we need to figure that out faster. That's me speaking only for me. Um, but if they're going to tell us the data says this about absenteeism, like we've got to make a bigger commitment than two percent a year, so, thank you.
Ms. Drew.
I just wanted to thank you all for the presentation. Because I can remember last uh year when you all presented, we were a little bit falling by the wayside. But we're on the path to move forward in the right direction now. And the effort that you have presented to us is very informative in letting us know that we're moving the right way. Not only do I look at what you're presenting, but also with Dr. Campbell, with the academic uh uh data that is being presented to us, we're seeing a change. It's not going to happen overnight and I'm not trying to put anybody else down in what they're questioning and asking. I just wanted to say thank you because I do see a change that is coming upon within our district. And I know that we'll keep moving forward in the right direction. Thank you so much.
Um, quick, just a quick definition question for me on clarity. When you, uh, in some of the slides, when you talk about doing things with fidelity, can you define for for us a bit about like what does that look like? Um, and maybe that's just an oversimplistic question. But when some of the slides talk about programs with higher degree of fidelity have higher percentage of mastery, what are you looking at there?
We're looking at several components. One of the components we look at for fidelity is when I walk into a classroom, do I see the resource that the board has purchased for the classroom? The other component we are looking at is the instructional routine that the classroom is in based on the, where they should be in their um lesson planning or the GVC. So if we should be in the middle of a unit, I should be able to observe a particular routine. And something that our team. And something that our teams are now diving into is to identify the move of the teacher in that routine, and the output of the student reacting to the routine. So, we're observing what they're using, what stage of the curricular routine they're in, and how the teacher and the student are interacting. To be able to then use that data to create professional development opportunities to bring back to them in order to support growth in that routine, and/or identify educators who have mastered a routine to invite them to lead professional learning for their colleagues. So, that's kind of the road that we're taking to identify fidelity. Our building principals conduct a minimum of approximately 10 DigiCoach watch, walks, and provide feedback on what they're observing. One of their focal areas is the curriculum, and they're giving us feedback on what they're observing. That feeds more of our data. And so, quarterly, we're gathering all that data, and we're able to then provide to leadership, this is what we're observing. They bring that down to principals in their learning networks. They can open up their DigiCoach and verify kind of what that pattern was for them to continue to monitor the implementation of the curriculum the board has approved.
Thank you. Totally separate now, Dr. Stubblefield, how many ELL students do we have in the district, roughly?
About, is it 8,000?
We're about 9,000. We're 41%.
I know when, when we were doing bond presentations, that was a, a point that we would talk about the number of ELL students that we have. And one of the things that we've discussed in the slideshow as well, because that's a, that's a large number for, for any district, right? I think for us as well. When we look at students who leave ELL, and they're performing at a, at a high rate of mastery after they leave, what have we, and maybe it's not a question for right now, but just thinking about, like, some of the questions, like, what are those things that we're doing with those students and families that we're seeing positive impact and successes for those ELL students that, that we're seeing? And I think that's a point of pride when we talk about points of pride for our district, the, the students who are leaving ELL or in ELL, their mastery after they leave ELL, and what that, what that looks like, and what, what lessons learned, what are we doing differently, or how, translate that for me.
So, one of the things we know is bilinguals do perform higher on academics. So, when you look at the national scores, a lot of our students, and they may be multilinguals, not just bilinguals, that, we see that. So, that's one of the things. Our programming that we're doing with the EL students and giving them intensive support in small groups, and the connections we're making, all we're doing with language supports. But that also affirms everything we're doing with implementing our dual-language schools. And we'll also see that performance, not just with our EL students in the dual-language schools, we'll also see the academic growth with our native English speakers as well. So, that's a, one of the big things is the academic rigor and that strong tier one. So.
Thank you. And then just, I guess a follow-up on that, and then I'll have one more question, and I think I saw a hand over here as well, sorry. With our ELL, like, and I appreciate the, the format here, because I think one of the questions I asked previously around MTSS, and just the alignment and the work together, thinking about our ELL students and our curriculum, can you speak a bit to, like, what that, how does that impact the, the curriculum and instruction aspect of the work with our ELL students in the classroom, outside of the classroom? What's the integration? I guess a bit more, if you could speak a bit more to that.
So, this past year, our school district decided to implement PSYOP across the entire district to ensure that that framework is being embedded in classrooms. And so, that's what, that's the process that we're currently in initial implementation, is every classroom teacher being trained on the components of PSYOP to ensure that every classroom has the ability to give access to content standards as our students are developing their English language as well. And so, that's what we're currently in, and we do have some buildings who have started incorporating PSYOP in previous years. And so, we will have some classroom, some buildings with more teachers that have that training, and with this push to make this framework a system-wide framework that's being revitalized in those buildings, and finding more support in their professional learning, as well as the integration in their curriculum. With regards to the, the curriculum, we are very focused on ensuring that our adoptions are made in collaboration with our EL department, and that our lead MEL coaches are involved in the creation of how we identify resources, as well as ensuring that the resources have the components of PSYOP reflected within their routines. And so, now, when we are looking at the implementation of, say, iReady, which is something that the board approved last year, and we are installing into our schools for the elementary, we, because of the training, we're, our coaches are able to identify the routine that's being exposed, how PSYOP is being integrated, and we are sharing the language of instruction around that framework with our adopted curriculum. So, we are very intentional in ensuring that our curriculum has that alignment. Our iReady resource has a diagnostic exam in Spanish, in the event that that is the dominant language for our students.
Awesome. Thank you. And I think this might be a question for Dr. Conrad. You mentioned, so I know the tests are changing, right? The state is changing the assessment, but just a clarity, like, with the, the scores and that we're seeing, or the, the data that we're seeing, when we are testing one group, it's not the same group, it's a changing group year to year, right? So, the, the scores from this year to last year, my understanding, it's not the same group of students, so you can't, it's not really comparing the apples to apples, it's a new crop of students, and especially around, that's, that's, yes, on that?
Yes.
Okay. So, then, like, when I'm looking at the kindergarten readiness, I just, not a question necessarily to discuss, but just thinking about, what do we need to continue to do, Rachel's point, Ms. Russell's point earlier about what additional supports, that pre-K supports for our students in pre-K, so that as they're entering kindergarten, they're not behind. So, that, that data, because I know it's a different group of students every year, but again, how do we support at the pre-K level? I mean, at all levels, right? But if we're getting them started off on the right foot, and even before pre-K, just making sure that we're providing those necessary support.
Yeah, you're, you're exactly right. We, we follow the cohort all the way through, so we've followed it to look at those patterns, to see how it's, it's adjusting over time. So, then, any entering group, any entering cohort, we can follow that pattern and say, okay, if we do it this way, if we implement this, we see that pattern change. And that's what we're looking for, because it is, it's a different group of kids every year, but we can still follow cohorts across time and look at those patterns of change. And that's what we're attempting to do.
Ms. Clark, did you have?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions whenever.
I don't really have a question now, or I have a question now, but I don't need the answer now. Can we get the data, based on the kindergarten readiness slide, to Randy's point, around how many of those students in the cohort that is further behind participated in one or any of our early childhood programs? Is that possible? Okay, thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. So, my first question is around absenteeism. I know we've spoken about it quite a few times, and if my notes or my memory both serve me correctly, there's a process in place when a student is absent and chronically absent through it, that the school is following up with that student and that family. In that follow-up, are you finding that the district needs to provide any other resources? We know standard processes don't necessarily work for families anymore, and we have to be able to pivot. So, is there anything that you would say this district, this board needs to be thinking about when it comes to, if a standard classroom is not working, like, what offerings do we need to have to make sure that our students are able to attend in some form?
So, I hear you asking if they're not attending well in the classroom they're in, if there's other resources as far as other classrooms or environments?
Other environments, do they need more of a, I just think about like Reach 500, like, what is it that our students, or is there anything else that we need to be considering to make sure our, our students make it across the finish line?
Yeah, so, we have a robust attend to achieve program where we're working with the kids, and trying to figure out what's the root cause of attendance. Attendance can be complex, there's multiple things in that. And if, in the end, we find out there may be a different environment, working with the families, then we do have different alternate pathways that we can help with our, our high school students and providing them. So, is that?
That is, is that part of the conversation with the students? I'm, I'm curious about, like, how many students have we found that need that other resource? Or more importantly, do we have what you need to be able to get our students in class? If it's, if it's within our control, we can't, if it's within our control, do we have what's needed in our current setup to get our, our students across the finish line?
Yeah, so, with what the resources we have right now, and what we use for our students, we work with the parents and offer different programs that might work for where the kids are at. But we are always open to expanding and growing and more creativity, so, with the, growing with our students, so.
And to Ms. Russell's point around the data, and we would definitely have to use data to be able to get there. I just want to make sure, I mean, so many times, the right people don't hear the need, and so, I just want to make sure that you are talking and speaking with Dr. Stubblefield about what it is that we need to be able to get our students there, which leads into one of my next questions about graduation and graduation rates. And I'm also curious, did we ever go back, we have someone attend Reach 500, and at that point, to me, they were successful, right? And so, maybe they came out in class of whatever number you want to put. That class, to me, is no longer 80% graduation. They, now, that number has increased, and maybe it's just the way I think about it, but that number changes, right?
Well, there are some state guidelines that we have to follow, and sometimes it does help it, but there's a window, like, they're counted as a graduate, but there's only a, there is a certain amount of window that they can be included in their cohort.
Okay.
And Dr. Conrad, do you know off the top of your head what it is, like, is it?
September. So, we can submit it up to that point. So, normal graduation May, and we have a window to continue to submit through that window. But then, they also, we do track a five-year cohort, so the students that graduate, for our purposes, the state has those rules of who's included in the cohort and who's not.
I respect the state, I'm just more-
Highly regulated, and so, it really is.
And in order for us not to look like we're not, or inflating our data and those, we just, they're included in whatever cohort the state that then determines that they're a part of, because then you could get a lot of, like, why does the state says your graduation rate is this, but you're saying is that? So, we just report out what the state is.
Makes a lot of sense. Okay. All right, thank you.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. I have two questions with, on your slide 50, where it says, continue to support letters training. Are all of our teachers who should be trained, are, are we 100%?
For letters training, we have four cohorts. We started training letters three years ago, it was before me, so I'm seeking, three years.
We started in 2021.
And we have a high rate of that cohort having finished, and we're in the two-thirds of the next cohort. So, everybody's on track to have their training, that should be by now. We can provide the exact data in the next board update. We have that data.
Yeah. So, Dr. Nguyen, I think because it's required now, so, we have a plan and a pathway every time we onboard teachers, and if they, if they didn't have unusual circumstances and they started in 2021, they are fully trained. And so, every year, if we get new staff, or sometimes their staff, and they may be out on FMLA or maternity leave, so they miss training, so then they are with that second cohort. But we have ongoing training to ensure that we're meeting the state requirements and pathways for people to complete the training. But the first cohort, which started in 2021, I'm almost certain is well over 90% for anybody who was consistently in our system and didn't have any extenuating absences.
Well, because of the new emphasis on literacy, the funding is going to run out.
Yes, yes.
Secondly, the pilot that we have to do, is there a separate set of, of data kept on them? Where is that?
So, we're a part of the pilot, and we're defining those things, and Dr. Conrad, or, actually, I think all of these are part of the meetings. We have weekly meetings with the state, and there, we're in the process of defining those, and once we have that, we will share that with the board. But there, the state is still in the process of saying, this is okay, that is not okay, we're doing forthright. So, we're, we're just in the planning phases with the state.
But will there be a separate set, there has to be a separate set of data collection?
Yes, yes, it is, because it's specific cohorts.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mylan.
I did have a couple of comments, maybe a question, and I know we were talking about mentioning, I lost my screen, that graduate, high school graduation rate. Anyway, I know you mentioned, you all mentioned the two years ahead of schedule. My question being, and I appreciate the, the information you've given, and the attainment of projected goals, I think they're very efficient, number one, coming from me. But are you all comfortable where you are? You say you're two and a half years ahead of schedule, or whoever might want to answer that, are you comfortable where you are to reach the tank goals on, for the social, for the, at graduation rate for high schools, for the five-year program? Are we there? Does the data indicate where we need to be?
Yeah, yeah, so, we had a goal, and we are at our two-year mark, so we are pretty confident that we'll get to our goal sooner, and then be where the state average is. And I think, and it, you know, 77%, we still have a lot of room to grow, but I do want to put it in perspective, it's the highest the graduation rate has been in 10 years.
Ever.
Yeah. So, we're, like, when we go back and look at it historically, so we are making the progress we need to make, and I think sometimes people lose sight of where we have come from over the years. So, but we're, we're exceeding what our targets were.
Okay, my statement is, thanks for asking a question. That's wonderful and great. We hear this, where we are right here now, in the confines of where we are, the general school district, the population, mind not counting, know the progress that we're making. And I say that, if we, I think we need to do a better job holistically to share, because what I get, we're, we're behind, we're, we're not graduating, it's negative, negative, negative. We need to, if the positive being done, and we're ahead two and a half years, we're reaching our goals, and we're, we're higher than our predicted level, folks need to know this. Population needs to know this, community needs to know this, that's, that's come from me. And however, that needs to be presented, it, it needs to be presented in such a way to, to stop the negativism, you know, that you hear, well, we don't need buildings, we, we need education in our schools. Kids need to graduate, they need, we don't need truancy. So, if these things have been corrected, and uplifted in a greater way, a better way, in a positive way, it needs to be known.
Yeah. And I will, and I appreciate you saying that, and we do share that, but I think the reality of it is, when you're comparing us to others, and that's what I think the community is doing, like, then it's like, well, you're not as good as X. So, we will continue to share the story, and to share our growth, and to say, we're not complacent or satisfied, but it really is a comparison, and not looking at the complexities of the unique opportunities that we have in the district to make those shifts. So, we'll, but I appreciate you saying it, and we'll do a better job of continuing to share our story. Yeah.
Like Dr. Conrad said, if we get the rebounds in the first quarter, the second quarter's going good, we get into the fourth quarter, we gonna win the game, and we gonna be 9-0. Done.
Um, Ms. Russell. I just, a follow-up question to, um, Mr. Mylan's remarks. So one of the things we oftentimes hear is, yay, graduation rate. However, our students are graduating without the ability to read. Which one of these slides, like, debunks that fact? Like, where do we go to show the data that not everyone in our district is graduating without being able to read? Like, where is that data to be able to share that on this, on this slide deck?
So when we look at, um, the district benchmark assessments, when we look at the state assessments, the state assessments are, are at 10th grade, and so they're a few years removed. But the district benchmark assessments, uh, we, we really need to build out a little bit more there at high school. We do capture some 11th and 12th graders in there. So unfortunately, on these slides, um, as, as they get close to graduation in those 11th and 12th grades, we don't have many data points, and these slides don't have those data points that show.
And neither does the public scorecard?
Because we don't have data points around our 11th and 12th grade students nearly.
I guess I'm really struggling to.
We don't have those data.
Right, and that's, and so, it's not that we can't do it, we can build them out to have that, to show that. But that is the way the state system, and we are aligned to that, but it doesn't mean that we can't explore to see when they're exiting, where they're at, and provide that to the board. Like, that we can add that as something that we'll do in the future. But any system you go to, they don't have those data points because the state doesn't collect it in that manner. Like, we have things that we could consider, like, if we looked at, like, what, where they are, how many students took the ACT, and how they performed on the ACT, or the work keys. We probably could glean some sort of data point in that, but we're not asked for that data, so we haven't put it together. But we can, in the future, figure out how do we show, um, our students who are leaving, and if they are college and career-ready around that? Because that's what it basically, that, I mean, I think that's what people are asking, like.
So the litters, we have, currently have no data that shows the literacy level of our high school students?
Not when they're, so they could take, they take a test their sophomore year, the state assessment. You don't take it after that. And unless they do ACT, we know about those.
The state assessment in 10th grade, we pay for all of our juniors to take the ACT, and then those are the two points?
Yes, yes, currently. And then we, all of our, most of our students, all of our students take work keys. So, so we can talk about and pull together some data to give you the information and then work to see what that looks like, so that we have that information.
Only Paige.
I just wanted to say, I, I wish we would change the 2% that we have for absenteeism. I think we need a higher goal. We should have a higher expectation than we expect our students to come to school. I didn't say make it 100% or 50%, but 2% is extremely low to me.
Yeah, so we can talk about that as a team. And to your point, we, is actually, we reduced it by 7.9%. So we can go back and calibrate around that. When those goals were set, we were taking recommendations from, um, our KISA out, like, there were other people talking to us about setting goals and stuff. And I, so we'll, we'll recalibrate around it, because.
Seven, I want to be clear, that 7.9% is only for the first quarter of '24, '25. So we still got a whole lot of school year to go, but.
Right, but if we continue to do what, like, if we look at where we were last year at this time, it wasn't that. So those are all the things that we're looking at, all of those levers. So we can, as a team, calibrate, calibrate, reset, and see what is, like, realistic, given multiple factors that we have to deal with. I think what people miss around chronic absenteeism, it is, it doesn't matter if it's excused. So if I am out because I can't be here because I had a medical procedure, I'm chronically absent.
I get that, but 2% is a goal. That says to me mediocrity, there's no expectation.
No, I'm not, I'm not, yeah.
Do better than that.
Yeah, so we will have conversations.
We need to have some higher goals, some expectation. Because if we don't expect much, then we're not gonna get much.
Yeah, and we.
If you want to know what their scores are, check the state records, they'll tell you.
Right, and what we also can do around this is to break down excused versus unexcused absences. And then you'll see how legitimate things like, I am, um, going on a college tour for ten, that is excused, but you're still chronically absent, and you may be gaining more from that experience than you would in the classroom. So the nuance around, like, we don't want it to be where it is. We can definitely, um, make our goal larger, like, we can talk about that. But the re, the, the component around, like, if you were just looking at chronically absent, unexcused, that sort of thing, it would, it, it tells a different story.
But we still had a problem after COVID. If you look at the research and the data that's out there, people just stopped going to school.
Yeah.
And we weren't doing, I, I'm not gonna, let me rephrase the we. Some districts, and we may be included in that, I don't think we really went back after those kids that didn't come back. And that's a problem, and that's a reality. After COVID, they didn't come back.
Yeah, and those kids are not counted in these things because they're not enrolled.
But there's still the consistency. I'm retired, I'm not in the neighborhood, I see more people with ki- I'm thinking, we're not out of school. And I asked him, why is he not in school? He didn't want to go, he thinks it's boring. You know, we got some big issues that we, and I know it's not easy, but that is a problem.
Thank you, additional comments, questions, discussion? Thank you so much, team, for the information. Board, as questions come up, please submit those to Dr. Stubblefield. We're gonna take a quick seven-minute recess, um, before we continue on with polit- with our policies. We'll be back at 7:40, thank you.
To go ahead, can I do that?
I'm on the board meeting for the month.
Okay, so.
No, but no, leave it on every.
Well, you gotta wait till.
Do I gotta act? Cause we have to. Oh, that's what I was wondering.
Is another special.
They found me a pencil.
I mean, I mean.
No, just because, I mean, it's a regular meeting, so you don't have to, it's not like a special meeting, you know?
On thirty December.
Oh, we're talking. Oh, I'll.
Well, I went eight, I got a little. Okay, uh, we're gonna go ahead and come back into our meeting. Thank you for giving us a brief recess. Um, board, it just came to my attention regarding something that requires some board action tonight. It's time sensitive, uh, otherwise, um, we would wait. Um, so Ms. Drew is, and I'm just reading from my email, will be attending our KSB Board of Directors Meeting on behalf of Dr. Nguyen this weekend on, or on Thursday, November fourteenth. Um, Ms. Drew will be attending my Zoom. Uh, so we, we just need board approval for Ms. Drew to attend on behalf of Dr. Nguyen. Um, KSB is asking, um, saying that we need board approval for that to happen. So, um, we'll need to amend the agenda. I'll need a motion to amend today's agenda to, um, what would we need to add, Mr. Goheen?
It would be adding an action item to, um, temporarily appoint Ms. Drew to replace Dr. Nguyen for that purpose.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any questions or discussion? And I apologize, I wouldn't have done this if it wasn't time sensitive, so. Hearing none, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so now we need to, uh, is there a motion to approve, uh, Ms. Drew to replace Dr. Nguyen, uh, or to attend the KSB Board of Directors Meeting on behalf of Dr. Nguyen on Thursday?
Second.
Moved in seconded, questions? Ms. Russell?
I just wanna be clear, so I heard attendance, but are we asking for her to be the voting delegate on behalf of, I just wanna make sure that, I, because it's requiring a motion, I just wanna make sure the motion is clear, it's both attend and represent as the voting delegate. Is that my interpretation? Yes?
You probably need an amended amendment to include the delegate assembly. Vote at the delegate assembly.
So attend and, I'm sorry.
In the board meeting, be a voting member and attend and vote during the delegate assembly.
Is that your amendment to your motion, Doc?
Is it the board meeting or it's the conference?
The board meeting is Thursday night, delegate assembly, I think, is Saturday.
So it's both?
Yeah.
Okay, cause I heard attend conference in the first motion. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be, but because it's requiring, I just wanna make sure I'm clearly.
You're good, I think Dr. Nguyen's amended motion covered it.
Yeah, cause attending conference has nothing to do with anything.
So, uh, friendly moment, uh, amendment from Dr. Nguyen, I believe, Ms. Brownlee Page, you seconded, are you okay with that? Okay? Um, so there's an amended, uh, motion, um, on the floor, and thank you, Ms. Russell, for that clarification. Further questions, discussion? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Board, we are now at, uh, Agenda Item Nine, Policy Review. These policies were discussed and approved for a first read, they are coming back for a second read. Uh, Mr. Goheen?
So, um, I know this is your guys' favorite, uh, item to do on the agenda whenever it comes up. I think, uh, some of these will be, uh, very easy to do, and then a couple we still have some cleanup on. We have made changes, uh, based upon the notes from the, uh, board retreat to some of these from the first read, and so we'll just kinda go through those. Um, we are, the second read for policy, CJ, I didn't receive any comments from the, um, amended changes that we had on there from the board retreat, so I'd ask for that one to be approved for second read, and then we'll give you a clean copy for the third read at the next board meeting.
I have an amendment for CJ.
Yep.
Amendment would read, rehiring of consultants shall be dependent upon minimum ninety percent performance on district evaluation tool. CJ is hiring, the title hiring consultants. This is related to rehiring of consultants. That's the motion.
Dependent on, you say ninety percent?
Ninety percent, minimum ninety percent performance on district evaluation tool.
Dr. Nguyen, can I, can I please ask you to repeat that motion?
Rehiring of consultants shall be dependent upon ninety percent performance on district evaluation tool.
So you're talking about the new evaluation tool that just was rolled out? I wanna make sure.
That's why I didn't label it anything, because it could change from time to time.
I know, but just for a point of reference for me, okay. Thank you.
Yes, we've, we've spent a lot of energy on evaluation tool, and I couldn't understand why it would not have been included.
For, for clarity, unless I'm mistaken, so, because there are two copies of CJ, one is hiring consultants, one is use of consultants, it appears to me the second one, use of consultants, is the most recent version, uh, not the hiring of consult, I just wanna make sure we're working off the same document.
It was, it was changed to use of consultants because, um, of the notes from the, the meeting that we didn't want to have the word hiring in there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's what the, the, the second version reads, or the current version reads. So, answer your question.
Yes, they're a little bit different, but the language within both are a little bit different, so I just wanna make sure we're working off the same document.
Okay, so what is CJ, what's the title CJ you're recommending, or board's recommending?
The, CJ is the use of consultants, and if I understand your amendment, that, so it would read, the superintendent may contract with professional consultants in accordance with policy DJFA. Um, administrators may recommend consultants with the board, to, consultants to the superintendent. The superintendent shall report on any use of consultants to the board and provide updates as requested. And then what you would have add, instead of rehiring, reuse, or recon- recontracting with consultants.
Recontracting with consultants of consultants.
Yeah, recontracting consultants will be dependent upon.
Shall be dependent.
Shall be dependent.
On minimum ninety percent performance on district evaluation tool. District is used as generic.
Ms. Russell?
I just wanna clarify, is there a nut, I don't remember the twenty thousand being removed, but it's removed in the use one.
So the, the policy, the, yeah, the newest one, the policy markup is based upon the, um, KSB recommendations and the review that came, the KSB recommendations came in August. The twenty thousand dollars is still in, the twenty thousand dollar limit is in both statute and it's in that policy that's referred to, which is DJB. So it does, it's duplicative language is what KSB said, and their recommendations that you got in August.
Thank you.
But it's still statutory there.
The law of the land.
And it's also in, um, referencing DJB or whatever it is. DJFA, sorry.
Additional questions, thoughts on, uh, proposed language? Just curious, um, the ninety percent, um, like, and I guess maybe looking at the tool, I don't have the tool in front of me, so just curious like what that reflects or looks like.
We are still, that is still a work in progress, so once, as we're developing it, we'll, uh, finance and those committees bring it to see what that looks like, so, yeah. I mean, I, whatever it is, we'll have a mechanism so that there is a score, so that will help, um, Mr. Carell and the team to do, um, to do it, to put it in place. But just to be clear, until it's developed and put in place, we won't be able to implement it. But I know we are, it's a work in progress.
But it's said to be completed by the end of this year? Um, I thought that's what we heard. I meant, and by the end of this year, I'm saying December twenty twenty-four.
Uh, I, I would have to check with Mr. Carell, like, we were gonna start with consultants, but I don't know, like, I can check with him and we'll give an update in there. I, off the top of my head, honestly, I don't remember if we said this year or the academic year.
Okay, and I, I guess my question around the, at this point arbitrary ninety percent and... Are you willing to amend, like, to eighty percent? I'm sorry. Okay.
At my job, you have to have compliance training, and a few of them are eighty, most of them are ninety. Now, you are, you're, you're, the type of tool we're developing goes into effectiveness, um, you know, I, I, we've, we've looked at it briefly, and there's, you know, one thousand questions, we haven't narrowed them down, but ninety percent is an A. Are you lowering standards? Is that what you, you know, open, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm basically saying you want an A.
Well, I guess I'm not really lowering the standard, I'm just thinking, um, the evaluation tool will continue to be subjective to a point, like, it's gonna be subjective on people and not, so, we may both attend the same training, I think it was trash, or I don't think it was any good, so I say it's fifty. You attend and you're like, oh my gosh, this was earth shattering, and you give it a ninety.
That's why there's more than two evaluations.
I know, but the, but the tool is then still going to, and so I'm trying to figure out what, I don't want, I don't want the tool to work against us or not allow someone to use someone based off of someone's negative feedback, and so I understand the, what you're trying to get at and what we're trying to work towards. I guess I, because it's not fully implemented and I don't have something more tangible, I just don't wanna lock us up at ninety. Eighty, I can roll with and be like, that's still high to me for something that's still an arbitrary number, because we don't know what it fully looks like yet, or how it will calculate it correctly.
You know what, it's just about excellence. If you want excellence, you want perfection. If you don't, you don't. So you voted down, you, you make the other amendment, but it just, I mean, you see, I'm going ninety. I want an A. I want, I want the person who will be hiring a consultant to be dynamic, you already said you, you have, uh, evaluations and you have, uh, recommendations, so if the, if the person is rotten, they're rotten. They won't be rehired, but if, you know, I'm going for an A. Sorry.
Okay.
Those are my standards. You don't have the same standards, you don't have them.
Been too long, we have just hired people, cause they were somebody's friend, and they didn't really produce quality work. That's my girl, that's my boy, come on in, I'm gonna hire Dr. Campbell, she's all right.
I think, well, I, just, I think, I think we won't aspire for excellence. I have a challenge in a percentage when the tool's not completed, and whether it's ninety, eighty, ninety-five, but I think that's kind of where my challenge is. The, the other question that I have on that is, because there's a difference between rotten and ninety percent, right? There's a huge difference as well, you could have a bad day and, you know, get an eighty percent, and now you're never allowed to come back, so that, that would be my second question, is what is the mechanism?
Dr. Nguyen about to tell you, but you getting paid for it, so I don't care about your bad day, so.
What, what, what's the mechanism, if there is one? If I get an eighty-nine, am I never allowed to come back and consult within the district again? So, so I'm just curious what that backend mechanism is, if there's a time period? Some of those questions, um, around that.
You know, you're trying to quantify, now you can say above average, that is just as vague as, as it can be. So you can go numbers, or you can go, you know, it's just like the, the, the test that you, you take. You think you got a ninety, and, and there's one thing that the professor said you got an eighty-nine. So, it's, it's, it's a crap shoot. I mean, come on, I mean, this is not this earth shattering, so.
Any other thoughts or questions on that?
I don't know about a percentage, and I don't know a better way of necessarily quantifying. I can't tell you that what one person or one event may value may be different than what another event may value, um, so maybe I didn't provide this before this other event, they don't even need this, and so you really are able to take care and accommodate my needs. So, I don't know if it's like meets expectations, because there are times that, and I know, I'm, I understand the educator's perspective there, um, on the ninety percent, I need an A, but there are times that an eighty-five is satisfactory, like, I can live with it, if, if we're using, if that's what we're using. Um, and the reason why I got an eighty-five percent is because the food I provided had onions in it, and I didn't like onions, and I told you, don't put onions in it. So that doesn't make them a bad person or a bad company, and that doesn't mean they don't come back. It means that I reiterate next time, don't put onions in my green beans. Like, I mean, and I know that's a bad, but I'm just trying to make sure that we are.
It's a bad example, because your, your, your evaluation tool didn't have food on it.
So.
It was the quality of presentation, did you meet the, I mean, did you meet the, the goals of, plus, you have, you have your, your, your staff airing and interviewing the people, but, but.
But is it a ninety, Dr. Nguyen, or is it a meets expectations, or I just?
You're trying to quantify, whatever number, somebody's gonna be unhappy with any number.
Yep.
So you could say ninety-five, you know, I want you ninety-five percent, and, and you would have a heart attack on that, so.
Well, I think to that point, that's why I'm wondering, do we wait until the tool is completed to look at what that is, and then say, hey, it has to be exceed expectation, cause that's what we're asking? Just throwing that, I mean, I think there's, having a level of what it is, I think, um, how we measure, evaluate, I think is important, um, but, there is a recommendation for added language. Um, Mr. Goheen, I don't know if we, do we need a motion on, on that, or can we have, did you make the motion? Okay.
I second it.
Okay.
I called the question.
Oh, we're making a policy on a tool that's not completed.
Right.
So I.
I said, I, the language says, the district's evaluation tool, next year it may be another tool.
Okay.
Think about that, we're talking, the, the point is to put into the policy, you have performance on evaluation tool. You wanna leave it blank?
No, I'm not saying that, but.
That's the purpose.
I.
You have your use, we're developing an evaluation tool.
Okay, got it, Dr. Nguyen. I'll leave it right there.
All right, Mr. Goheen, can you read the language again? That last, that, have the language?
So, the, the last sentence, or the additional, last sentence, which would be added on to the end of CJ, would be recontracting of consultants shall be dependent on minimum of ninety percent performance on the district's evaluation tool.
It'd have been upon.
Upon.
And this is second read, so there's an additional read that come forward. Okay, uh, Ms. Smith, uh, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes, being that this is a second read.
Okay, thank you. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, no.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes, but I, before or during the third read, I would like to have the implementation timeline, and I think there's some additional, I will say yes this time, but I think there needs, before we get to the third read, we need to have something solidified to ensure we're not implementing a policy that A, won't take effect um, in the school year, and B, um, that's still subjective, I'm, I have a lot of concerns about that part.
It's subjective now.
Okay.
Right.
It's not evaluation now.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next policy is what?
Next policy that is up, um, is policy BDA, and, uh, again, this one's, um, I think there's, is there just the one version of this one? I think that you got the version and then the original version, so.
Yeah.
Um, the one question that I did, cannot tell from the notes from the, um, board retreat was there were some indication that the board was considering having a policy committee, this is on development of policy. Um, so I did not include that, because I wasn't sure what the board had decided on that one way or the other.
Um, I recall that they didn't decide, and it was just moving forward, it was a discussion.
Just threw it out.
Yeah, and no decision, so that should not, you were correct in not concluding it.
Correct. So, I, this one should be ready for second read, unless there are changes proposed tonight.
A motion to approve BD, BDA for second read?
Somewhat.
Seconded. Seconded. Questions or discussion?
So which one is the second read? The plain BDA or 9GD 2006?
It's the one, I don't know, but it's the one that's in drafting or amending policy. It says and/or board members.
Yes. That's the one that says the superintendent and/or board members may recommend new.
It's the one with the numbers, NGD 2006.
Yeah.
It's the ND, NGD 2006.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Now, where is that at? I'm sorry, it's long.
It's on the board, it's item be under policy.
There's two.
And then it's the one that's labeled N9GD 2006 dash policy. EDA, EDA. Oh, mine's is showing it's the second copy.
Not here.
Yeah, it shows us the second copy on mine, too.
Questions or further discussion? Give them this page. All right. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Winn.
Dr. Winn, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next policy is for policy FC, naming of facilities. That's another one I didn't have any comments on. So again, the second version on your sheet is, is the proposed change one. I think it's actually got red lines on it.
Motion to approve for second read FC?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion?
Underneath naming new facilities, were you suggesting that we move, change that word from shall to must? Because I know it's not the board shall, must solicit.
Which, where are you at, Rachel?
Naming new.
Naming new facilities.
Naming new facilities.
It's the red line one.
It's a listening request.
Oh, because that's what was on the note. So I didn't know if that was a must or a shall.
I think, I don't remember.
In the retreat, I, I couldn't tell what, whether you guys wanted to move must to shall and I wasn't quite sure what the difference.
Well, the Dr. Winn had brought up in the first one, the soliciting request, she had said, why are we changing it from May to shall? And we had talked about, we could just leave it at May. But in the naming new facilities, I don't think, I would say we could omit the world, the word must. Because I think shall and must are the same.
That's fine.
Comments, questions? No, Ms. Smith, roll call.
So just, just to be clear, we're eliminating the word must from the second read, right?
Correct. Yes.
I got a question. Why did they take that last line out? Where it says, when there, whenever there is a request to rename an existing property, the board shall first determine whether to consider the request. If the board acts not to consider the request, no further action will be taken. What was the rationale for taking it out?
Yeah.
That was what was proposed at the retreat from what I had.
But I was just wondering why.
Yeah. So the process that we're kind of clarifying as the process for submissions is is that instead of a request being made in a variety of forms, a request is made directly through the link that has been created to submit those requests along with historical information about the person or your request. Those requests would directly go to the board clerk and the COO. And then at the facility, at the naming committee meeting, the naming committee would review their request and make a recommendation to the board. So essentially it's eliminating oftentimes, or during my tenure on the board, the requests come to the board. The board says, send it to the naming committee. The naming committee does all the work and then it comes back to the board. So it's just eliminating another step. There hasn't been a time where we haven't said, oh, go investigate it. And so I think that's where that came from. And because there's this creation of the form and the tracking and the more information being needed through that form, we could address, we could adjust the process for that. So essentially the board still has the last, the last word. But also the naming committee is made up of three board members as well. So it would come in front of three board members anyway.
Any additional questions? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Winn.
Dr. Winn, yes.
Thank you.
You.
Okay, so the next policy I believe is policy BBC, which is board committees. And I know there are changes you'll want to this one. I just wasn't sure exactly how you wanted to do it. Because the, the notes and the information from the retreat didn't reflect it. I understand that you want to break the facility and boundary advisory committees back up into separate committees. Do you want to stay with, on the, on the board website or the school district website? You guys have membership for the facilities and boundary committees. Is, are those the memberships and the description that you want to stick with or are there changes to that that you want to make? And then the second one is, I'm, I know you want to put a finance committee back in place. I had the same question. Is it still same membership and information that's on the website or was there something different that you wanted?
Yeah, I think my recollection was the same for boundary and facility to continue to be split and have what's on a current, currently, what's on the current website, how it describes the makeup and, and what they do is what's in here. And then finance, yes. Having the finance committee, the way I believe that it's on the website and the makeup of the finance committee. I think the only, originally, correct me if I'm wrong, this was potentially to move away from finance and have a budget committee. But I think we've established that.
There was, there was language at the tail end from the, the meeting about having in lieu of a finance advisory committee, the board shall establish dates for budget meetings. And then there were notes that said, no, take that out, put the finance committee back in.
Correct.
And then have, I think that in the handbook or something.
Correct. Yeah, I think we want to keep the finance committee in policy, in this policy and have the budget committee in the handbook.
So I'm going to, just before you guys decide how you want to move, make a motion on this, I want to tell you who the membership of the finance committee, the boundary committee and the facilities committees are on the website to make sure there's no changes that the board wants. Okay? So the membership of the finance committees that currently reads on the website is three board members, the superintendent, chief operations officer, executive director of budget and finance, and others as designated by the board or administration. And then for the facilities committee, it is three board members, chief operations officer, director of physical properties, seven appointed community members at large and others as designated by the board or administration. And then the boundary committee is three board members, chief operations officer, executive director of operations, principal representation, community members by application and others as designated by the board or administration. This appointment is a two-year commitment. So I will take those and put those into the policy if that's what everybody wants. I just want to make sure that's what the board wants in terms of the membership of those committees.
And the superintendent in that second one, right? I don't know if I heard.
On boundary?
No. Superintendent is only in the finance committee.
Okay.
Unless you want to.
I come.
Spoke up this whole time, but she used, she said, hold on.
I wasn't on boundary the last time, but.
Correct. I think so.
So on this one, then I would want the, the motion to be approved for a second read with adding the, the membership and committees back. The boundary committee, the facilities committee and finance committee is reflected on the board's website.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Russell?
So for clarity and to clean up some things, the school naming committee is just called the naming committee.
Not on your website, it's not.
It should have been updated because we talked about it a year ago. So we'll, we'll, we'll clean it up on the website. We'll clean it up.
I took it from the website.
It shouldn't be renaming.
It's not renaming. It's naming because you can name.
Anything.
Anything.
Okay, okay, okay.
It should have been cleaned it up.
And in the policies.
And we'll clean it up on the website in that. Okay.
Thank you. Additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Russell. All right, Ms. Smith?
We, hold on just a second. Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Winn.
Dr. Winn, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next one we have is board policy BCBI. And I, I'm not aware of any changes since what we have in from the board retreat. So it's the second one. Unless there are proposed changes, we'd ask you to approve that one for second read.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion on this?
Question on B, if that's in yellow, are we eliminating that or we add?
No, you're, you're adding it.
Adding that.
I just, I just highlighted it so I could see what the change was. It won't be highlighted on the final version.
Well, I, I have a problem. I think if everybody should be given the same amount of time. I'm not saying take away anything from anybody who English is not their first language, but I think give them all six minutes.
So the purpose of it is if you give them six minutes, if English is your second language, you would need to give them 12 minutes. Because they're talking and then you need to be able to have time to translate it. So that's, it's not giving them additional time is for the translation portion. So that's what that's for. They're not getting more time. It's translate, so if they speak in their language for three minutes, it's to give whomever the translator is three minutes.
Well, I know some people, I, I still think if you give one group six, the other can have 12. I don't, give the other people that got three more time. Because sometimes they're emotional when they get up there. They're having a hard time trying to pull it all together. I think they deserve some time.
I don't.
I think this is more a question around equity, though. It's not around like whether you.
Well, but some, but there are some people who feel that way, who feel that they should be given some more time, too. I'm not saying take that away. I'm saying let's give a little.
Right. So, but your, your board policy and practice is you can determine, and you have, you vote to give them more time if you.
Is that in here?
It's in, if you go up top, you, I think under your public comments, you can, you already have the authority if you want to give somebody additional.
It specifically says speakers will be limited advised when their time is expired. Extensions may be granted upon the majority vote of the board. So the board at any time can always vote to give the speaker more time.
And you've done that.
Yeah, but not consistently. We kind of cut people off. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
Any additional comments, questions? Just, I think for a clarity on, on interpret, I know we provide interpreters at the beginning of each board. Is that in policy somewhere? Are we legally or policy wise providing interpretation at board meetings?
It, it's not, you guys do not have a policy requiring it. You do provide it, but, and it's not required, but.
I'd be interested. I know this board has done a really great job of ensuring that that's something that we provide at board meetings. I would have an interest in.
So that would be a diff.
A different policy or?
Because the.
It'd be a different policy or an amendment to this policy.
We can work on that. But I'd, I'd like to see that.
Devil's advocate for you. If you're not able to provide that language interpretation, what happens?
Yeah, and I think that's why we got to play it out with our multilingual department to see what we would or wouldn't be able to do so. I'm, I'm holding off from adding anything now until we can work through that. Okay. Any other thoughts? Now, is there a motion to approve for second read BCBI?
Moved. Second.
And seconded. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Did you have something?
Yeah. Because in, in B, it said speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes, which may include questions by the board. I thought traditionally we didn't ask questions. So can we ask questions now the way that's written?
Yeah, I mean, the way it's written, you could. I mean, traditionally don't.
Because it was a one-sided thing. We're just listening. So now they can ask, we can ask questions?
Well, it's always been, well, it's always been this way. So it's not now. It's just, I think it's just been board practice tonight.
No, I've never seen where it said we may ask.
That, that change was.
That's the first time I've seen that.
This is the old policy.
That's the exact policy.
Okay, well, traditionally, we've never, we've been told not to ask questions.
Sure.
I, I agree. That's been what's.
That's been the thing. So I'm just.
Well, as of April 9, 2013, y'all still was.
So we can ask questions now. That's clear, right?
Well, this is only second read, but yes.
Okay, well, I mean, they're saying it's always been that way. I don't remember seeing that, but since it's been there, okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any, right? I do, I, well, I guess we're, we're voting. Sorry, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Winn.
Dr. Winn, yes.
Thank you.
And so that last one is board policy BCE. And the one comment I heard, the, the second one is the one that is the proposed from the, with the changes from the retreat. But I also heard there was some concern about designating the meetings or the listening sessions with students as a world cafe. But I left it in there because that wasn't reflected in the, the notes from the retreat. But that was something that was suggested to me might be something that was too limiting. So.
I did reach out to Greg today and just say, like, that is one method to do it. When we did the things with the students during the day, it was still engaging, but it wasn't a world cafe. So I think it's probably in policy better to just have broader language saying that the board will have listening and learning with students. I mean, whatever that is, it doesn't prevent you from using a world cafe, but it doesn't limit you to the world cafe.
So a thought I had about this one, looking at this, is this calls for the board to have two special meetings on the student world cafe part. Oh, I got, now I see. I was looking at it in the paragraph. But I was thinking the event that happened, we didn't actually have a special meeting. And so this is saying we would have two special meetings. And so then I've been messing around in my head about what the actual language should be.
Yeah, I think it's called as, well, I don't know for sure what you're doing in the meetings with the students. But if it's a meeting of the board. the meetings with the students. But if it's a meeting of the board and it's not a regular meeting, it has to be a special meeting. So, I, I guess that's the nuance there. If this.
Well, it's different than, I think the purpose for it to be here is the intentionality to make sure that it happens whether we're sitting here or Knesset's being the support role for who is currently planning them. But I guess my concern is, is that this calls for an actual special meeting similar to November 19th, what we had on October, what have you. That wasn't a special meeting and we didn't even have quorum. And so, then I'm just, how do we change the language to still say like, this is what we want, but it's not a meeting. But I guess I'm also asking you to do something that we also shouldn't be doing, but I'm also.
Right, I mean, you're.
It's an invitation.
I understand. I guess, I guess the question is if, if the board is, if you're expecting the entirety of the board, or at least a majority of the board to show up, and the purpose of the meeting is to take input from students and feedback from the students that the board is going to discuss with them, that's district business, so it probably counts as a meeting and would have to be noticed. Now, I suppose if you're going to...
So, Greg, what happened this year is it probably, more generally can say the board will engage with students either through a special meeting or a staff-planned event because then that gives you an option. So, when staff planned it, some of the board could have, it's like when we invite them to other things and then they had a portion where they shared with board, anybody in the room, what their problems, solutions, and recommendations were, but the board did not take any action. They just listened. So, maybe if it's a or, and/or, because they, you still could have your two special meetings would be my recommendation. In that way, you have flexibility in it. You don't have to do both, but you can. Greg's taking notes. Okay.
I have a question. Under the student world cafes, it says costs associated with board engagement events should be outlined in the board's annual budget. Now, this year, a lot of money was spent on the bond, so there's not as much money unless you're taking it from another department.
So, when, when staff planned it, we used our budget. It wasn't your special meeting. If you have something special, different, you plan it, it will come from your budget. We, the two events, we have one for high school and middle school. We'll have one for our high school and middle school second semester. It comes out of our budget. If you plan something different, then it would come from your budget.
And we do currently have it in our budget. It is.
Okay, but the, the upcoming one coming up, is there enough money to do?
Yeah.
I mean, we got enough to do it. The issue was what are we providing? Or is it a meal? Is it a snack or whatever? Is there enough funds to cover that?
So, I think based off where you are with funds, you can make a determination because it, it doesn't say what the cost will be or if you'll do any of that. So, it gives, it just says if you're going to have that and you're going to have costs, it'll come from your budget.
I mean, the only concern I've got about whether you call it a special meeting or not is if I look at the Open Meetings Act and the definition of meeting, it says meeting means any gathering or assembly in person or through the use of telephone or other medium for interactive communication by a majority of the membership of a public body or agency subject to this act for the purpose of discussing business or affairs of the public body or agency. I don't know what you do in the meetings, but if you're having communications between board members in the meeting and discussing district affairs, even if you're including students in those discussions, I think it probably qualifies as a meeting.
So, I think just for a point of clarity, Greg, we had, we, we staff planned a meeting. The board didn't. And we invited board members, like when we invite board members to an event, board heard what the students did. They didn't facilitate it. And then they just basically thank the students or ask questions, but they didn't take. So, is that still a meeting if we're planning it?
I don't think the planning of it is what matters. I think what matters, because in fairness, the administration plans our regular meetings other than the agenda being set. I think the issue is are there going to be interactive communications by the board members between, between board members during the thing? So, if it's, you know, you've got, you're, you're listening or, or interacting with students and you're separated and you're not actually interacting with each other, it probably doesn't count as a meeting. But if you're interacting with.
Okay.
Board members, it may very well count. So, I'm just.
Yeah. And then the second one, we didn't have any board members to attend. So, if we had noticed that there was no board members, so we wouldn't have been able to have a meeting. So, we'll navigate through what needs to be done. Yeah.
And, and, and maybe this becomes the question of what, what the board's intent with what this looks like, this attempt to engage with students and what that looks like and, and what you are wanting that to be, what, what you're wanting to be accomplished as part of that. So, I think that becomes the issue. You know, if it's outside the scope of the Meeting Act definition, then don't call it a special meeting. And we could come up with another way to go at it. But if there's going to be discussion at that meeting between board members about school affairs, then I think we've got to count it as a meeting.
We, I think we can, so I don't know if it's a motion on the floor, but I think we'll just say.
I don't, I don't think it's a motion.
There's not.
Okay. Um, we, I think just changing the language from student world cafe to student listening and learning because that gives you flexibility. And then the other language will leave it and will, if we plan it, we'll just notice it based off of the potential. But then if people don't show up, we can't have a meeting. We'll still do it. It's just not a meeting anymore. That, so, okay.
If less than four show up, then we don't have.
Less than four, it's, it's just not a meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the only reason I'm concerned about this definitional issue we're kind of getting into is if you have a majority of your board that show up and start discussing school affairs.
Yeah.
You're going to violate coma. And I don't want you to violate coma. I don't know that you're ever going to have that happen where you're actually having board members interact. I'm just looking at it from a safety standpoint to make sure you've got it handled correctly.
It goes back to the intent. What is the intent of listening to students to actually receive and, and do take action or just?
Yeah. I mean, I would hope, I hope that every board member looked at those four presentations at the high school students. We haven't gotten the middle school ones yet. But it would be my hope that we listen to those and either provide a feedback in our one-on-one with Dr. Stebbelfield or at this table when we're making decisions moving forward that we're addressing some of those. I think some of the things that were shared, the staff was there too and was able to go back to leadership. I don't know what the.
You don't know what the outcome, but if.
I don't know what the follow-through.
Right.
So, I will tell you based off the meeting that we planned and not to belabor this. There are things that the kids share that we then took to my superintendent advisory group. And we actually have some things that we are, we will implement based off of their recommendation. That doesn't necessarily require you all's approval, but that was something that we were doing now. And if you schedule your own outside of that, then I think that's where you all here can decide what's the purpose. But our intent when we scheduled it was to hear from them, have them identify things that we can actually make progress on or create a timeline for. So, that's what we did. We are taking action on several of the things that they recommended.
My, my, my thought might be that if you're willing to remove the word, word, world cafe to give some greater flexibility, maybe go ahead and adopt it for second read with that or adopt it with second read as it currently exists for now. And then let me take a look at the Open Meetings Act a little bit more carefully. And then also, board members reflect on what you're wanting to do if you're attending this, these, these interactions as a board as a whole, what you're wanting to do as part of that. And if you come back and it's, it's purely just, you just want to be there to listen and you're not going to have dialogue amongst yourselves as opposed to, you can certainly have dialogue with the students without it being an open meeting, just like you could go to a football game and have conversations with the students. But if the purpose is for you to gather and discuss among yourselves as board members, then that's what's going to create a meeting. So, I think we just need to be careful about how we characterize this in our policy so that it's not misinterpreted as a meeting if it's not intended to be a meeting of the board. So, that's my thought. But I, the failsafe would be to notice it up so that you don't run any risk of a violation.
There are a motion to adopt for second read with, uh, flexibility with removing the language around world cafe, um, around engagement, student engagement. Or something to that effect. Is there some kind of motion forward?
Yeah, we could substitute the word engagement for world cafes. That probably broadens it out enough.
So moved.
Second. Moved in seconded to adopt for second read, remove the world, words, world cafe, replace with engagement. Any further questions? This will come back one other time. We'll have additional opportunity to feedback.
You're moving it, removing the two words in the subheading and also in the description.
Correct.
And replacing it with form of engagement.
The intent is for student, yeah, engagement, student engagement on the top and engagement. No thoughts? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up board, we will hear from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Anna Stebbelfield.
Good evening, everyone. I will be as brief as possible. I first do want to again thank my heartfelt gratitude to each and everyone who supported passing the bond for the community. This is a significant investment and it's a testament to our shared commitment to providing the very best for our students, educators, and community as a whole. Also want to say congratulations. We're excited to announce our 2024 nominees for the Kansas State Department of Education Kansas Horizon Awards. This is a state award that recognized teachers who had an excellent first year of teaching. This year's nominees are Kristen Verimer, Vermore at J.C. Harmon High School and Faith Davis at Emmy Pearson Elementary School. K S D, K S D E will select 32 first-year teachers from across the state for the state award, which be, which will be announced at the beginning of 2025. So, best of luck to both of them. This weekend, Windot High School will host a concert performed by the Kansas City Symphony on Thursday. It's Thursday, November 14th at 7:00 PM. Tickets to the event are $5 per person with the proceeds going to the district's music department. This is a great opportunity to hear a world-class symphony while helping students succeed in the performing arts. Hope to see you there. And this is just a reminder that please join us at the Board of Education, the Board of Education next Tuesday for their upcoming Listening and Learning Session on November 19th from 5:30 until 7:00 PM. There will be a meal provided starting at 5:00 PM. The Listening and Learning Session is an opportunity for families and the community to offer feedback. The specific topics we will be looking for feedback on are cell phone use policy, engaging parents academically, and enhancing the welcome center experience. Please, there, submit any questions that you have online ahead of time. And your questions do not have to be limited to those three topics. There will be a portion of the evening provided for individuals to ask the board questions directly after we do the feedback portion. Ruby Bridges Day is, as we talked about earlier, is Thursday, North, November 14th. And as we said, we have students from Frank Rushden, Quandero, Slago, Sumner, and Windot who will be able to attend. And then congratulations to our Foundations of Excellence for hosting The Reasons to Believe. It's always great to see all of the alumni and all the things that they are accomplishing. And congratulations to all of our honorees. And last, I would like to say yesterday was Veterans Day and, and say thank you for your service to all of our veterans and active duty members. And thank you to Mr. Mylan, who is a veteran. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
That's all that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stebbelfield. You've mentioned several things that I was going to mention, so I won't reiterate them. But again, thank you to our veterans and active military for all you do and for your families as well. And a heartfelt, similar thank you to all of the voters of Kansas City, Kansas, U S D 500 residents who, who voted to approve the bond. This will be a transformational initiative for our district, for our community that will change our community and our district for generations to come. So, thank you for everyone that put in so much work, time, board, for all that you've done, to our staff that did, put in so much time for that as well. And to everyone who voted, just thank you. Thank you for, for your trust and thank you for believing in the district. And I'm, I'm excited and look forward to seeing what comes from that. The only other, other thing I'll add is just a thank you to the, to all of our talented singers and performers in the district. I attended the Choral Festival at Windot High School a week ago or a week and a half ago. It was great to see so many students there who sang, performed. It was a beautiful afternoon and to see so many families who were there supporting their children. It was just great to be there and see that. So, thank you for the invitation and thank you for your, sharing your talents with us. That'll open the floor to the rest of the board. Any comments? Congratulations to our two electeds, Dr. Nguyen and Ms. Brownlee Page, who were elected on Tuesday, November 5th as well. And to everyone who's elected here locally, congratulations as well. So, just wanted to make sure to hear that.
I just want to thank the board for flowers and cards during my loss on my sister.
I wanted to thank the board for allowing us to go to the Q convention. And they have excellent workshops. And really, the main emphasis is that we got to find a way to get our communities involved. A lot of them are hurting. They have problems. But they all stress having expectations and demanding the best and wanting the best for our kids. And then, I know time is of essence, but Mike Battles, who worked for our paint department, who was a painter, lost his wife and they buried her last week. And then the, I can't, I know his last name begins, ends with a B, who was a former vice principal at Windot, was also buried last week. So, we lose a lot of people. Some I know because I've been in the district long enough. Some I don't. But I think we do need to recognize people because they've given a lot of their life and their time, their energy, their money. Because people are constantly given, that we need to say something, at least to their families to know that we appreciate what they've done.
I'd like to tell what, and also thank the district for allowing us, for me to go to a 10-Q as well. And it was very enlightening, enhancing. And I got a lot of nuggets and a lot of information that will, that helps me as a, as a board member for the community as we look at some things. As Sister Wanda Page said, that it's, it's been, it was a lot of great classrooms in, in the environment. It was very, very high and efficient. Look at it. One, one narrative is we're ordinary people with extraordinary assignment. We have an extraordinary assignment and the task is ever before us. And there's a need for student voice home and classroom community, which we just talked about just briefly. And that. briefly, and that every priority has an equity commitment. So every, every priority and every policy that we do and have is a, is a commitment behind it, and don't take it lightly because we're servicing a, a, a generation that, that's, that's needed to enhance the, the education and process. And one major thing that I'll be quiet is to keep the train moving, you know, just keep the train moving in such a way, in a positive way, because the train's not moving, we gonna, we gonna, you just make it, just make sure it runs well. Let me say that, make sure the train runs well. So just glad, glad to be a part of this board to help the train, the train of education run well in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Mylan. Ms. Russell, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I didn't know if somebody else was going. I also just wanted to take a quick moment and just personally thank everyone for their commitment to the facility study, the bond, the cop, the meaningful conversations that were had around schools and around improving academics for our student. Students, I think all of that was a win for our community to be able to come together and have those conversations regardless of where you fell on the issue or the situation. I also just wanted to shout out our winter sport, I mean, our fall sports who are wrapping up their seasons. A lot of our football teams got to play in some playoff games, and so just saying, congratulations, looking forward to seeing you, our All-Stars represented in January up here at the dais. And then lastly, I just wanted to congratulate Harmon Football Coach as he was recognized as the Coach of the Year for the Meadowlark League. And so, kudos to him. They are really doing some amazing things over there with the Harmon Football Team, and so I just wanted to shout that out. And then lastly, and I will shut up, I had the opportunity to go to the Choral Festival alongside Mr. Lopez, and it was just beautiful, like, to see our students singing, and I posted on my Facebook page, their closing song was just so memorable, and I think times such as this, we all need to be reminded that we are one community. We will grow from all of the trials and tribulations we have experienced over the last couple of months, but our students are powerful human beings, and it's so great to be in community and be reminded of really how great KCKPS is. So, thank you.
So, Ms. Clark.
I'll chime in. So I had the opportunity to also attend Q, and one of the things that really sticks out for me is don't stand on the shoulders of giants, jump off. And so I really, I really like that phrase, I'm a phrase person, so it's, it definitely was an experience or a conference that I will continue to attend. Secondly, the foundation, it was amazing watching our students and seeing them with their checks, so I was able to attend that as well, and it was really good. My last thing that I will mention, I just, there are two more things. The bond, thank you for the, thank you for supporting the bond. My daughter is a student, and there was just so much excitement between text messages and friend groups saying, thank you, thank you, thank you, so thank you to our community for that. And then lastly, I was able to attend an event that is indirectly connected to our students, and so it was just that reminder of how people show up every day. We don't know what it took for our students to be able to be there, and so thank you to our staff for everything you do. Thank you for the patience that you are able to provide to our students. It just was a good reminder, there were adults speaking to the issues that they were having, which directly impact the students and the kids that leave out of those houses and those homes, or maybe they don't share a home. So thank you to our staff for the education that you do and how you're patient with our students.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Hot off the press, congrats to Harmon's debate team who took third in sweeps today. Congratulations to that Harmon debate team. And then just on a sober note as well, Ms. Page, thank you for reminding me, this community lost a giant as well in Patricia Bruni recently, who was a huge advocate for our school district, for our students, always standing up for our, our students and our community, was, served on the trustees for the community college, and also served on the foundation, Schools Library Foundation, and has, was a huge advocate of, of all edu, everything education. So condolences to Commissioner Bynum and to, to their family, and just, we remember them as well in time, so thank you. With that, board, I hope you're ready for another two hours. We've got several things to discuss, I'm kidding, joke, haha. So we have reached our executive session portion. Many of you lucky souls get to go home, but the rest of us have to stick around for these. So would entertain a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma. To conclude, Dr. Stebbelfield, Mr. Goheen, Dr. Campbell, Mr. Lilly. And that's it for this first one for, go in for...
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, starting at 8:55.
I'm sorry, does Doug need, or you were good? No, so that's it.
Okay. Are there motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
And seconded, questions? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I can. Hello? Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to return to open session, please. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Mylan. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Okay. Motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect privacy interests of all parties involved, including Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Mr. Lilly, Dr. Campbell, for three minutes, going in at 9:07. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Okay.
I am not. I know better. Motion to return to open session, please. Moved by Ms. Drew, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew. Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect privacy and interests of all parties involved under coma, including Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Mr. Lilly, Dr. Campbell, for three minutes, going in at 9:11. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith. Oh, with, sorry, friendly amendment with action, potential action to follow. Ms. Russell, are you okay with that? Ms. Clark, are you okay with that?
I am.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you. Return to open session, please. Moved by Ms. Drew, seconded by Mr. Mylan. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect privacy interests of all parties involved under coma, including Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Mr. Lilly, Dr. Campbell, to go in for one minute, two minutes, at 9:26. With potential action to follow. So moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew. Maxine Drew. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Motion to return to open session, please. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Mylan. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark. Ma- Maxine Drew. Randy Lopez.
Yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
All right. Motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of all parties involved under coma to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Mr. Lilly, Dr. Campbell, um, with potential action to follow for five minutes going in at nine twenty-nine. This is exec session number six for those of you keeping track. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. All right. Motion to return to open session, please. Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Ms. Russell. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
All right. Motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under coma to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Mr. Lilly, and Dr. Campbell for five minutes going in at nine thirty-six. Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Ms. Russell, with...
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. All right. Motion to return to open session, please. Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Ms. Drew. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Okay, thank you. Motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of parties involved under coma with potential action to follow to include Mr. Goheen, um, for fifteen minutes going in at nine forty-four. Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Mylan. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Dr. Nguyen.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Where is Ms. Smith?
Hold on just a second. Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
All right, we've got a couple of items we've got to approve. Mr. Go ahead, I just want to make sure I get these correct. We have, is there a motion to approve the real estate contract?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any questions or discussion?
Uh, can we get some, I know you can't reveal everything, but it was so many of them.
Okay. Yes.
So you said the first report?
Yes, the first hearing officer's report.
Oh, first, okay.
And moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report?
So moved.
Um...
The first one.
Or the first one.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any questions or discussion?
Uh, can we get some, I know you can't reveal everything, but it was so many of them. Okay. Yes.
So you said the first report?
Yes, the first hearing officer's report.
Oh, first, okay.
And moved and seconded.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, no.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, no.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, any questions? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, any questions or discussion?
Uh, can we get some, I know you can't reveal everything, but it was so many of them. Okay. Yes.
So you said the first report?
Yes, the first hearing officer's report.
Oh, first, okay.
And moved and seconded.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, is there a motion to uphold the hearing officer's report? The second one. Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you. Oh, Dr. Nguyen, I'm sorry, Dr. Nguyen.
Yes. Oh, yes.
Okay.
All right, motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the hearing officer's report, the second one?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
I'm trying to remember what the second one was, I'm sorry.
A long night.
No.
Okay. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yeah.
And carries, thank you. Um, and I believe this will be the last one, is there a motion to approve the waiving of liquidated damages?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Um, Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, no.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Uh, Robert Marlin Jr.
Hold on.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Yes.
Rachel Russell.
Okay.
Rachel. I'm sorry, Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
I believe that's the last item.
Unless somebody wants to make a motion on the other.
No.
Okay. Doesn't sound like it, all right. Um, thank you board, thank you for your time, I know this was a long night, thanks for your time tonight, thank you staff, with that, this meeting is adjourned, have a great night.